Has been okay, but I don't think it ever really made the public comment section effective for a lot of reasons. But anyway, it's great to see faces. So this is the July Planning Commission meeting, and we'll do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its own individual liberty and justice.
Before we get to the minutes, I'd like to just reach out to my fellow commissioners and say, this isn't something we need to tackle tonight, but if people could get back to me with their preferences for time of meetings, the Zoom meetings were six o'clock starts, and it worked for some of us, I think, very well, and for others, maybe not as well. It worked for the staff, I believe. So if you all could just let me know your preferences, either six, six-thirty, or keep it at seven, and then maybe we can make a decision on that. And that can just be done by email, if you will. Minutes of the June 7 meeting, look, does that do, is the commission prepared to say what their preferences are? I just didn't want to bog this meeting down with it. I prefer six. Liz, you're good? Chris? Okay, and Steve? Well, how do people feel about six-thirty compromise? Gives us a half hour head start on, okay, can we all vote for that? Great, thank you. So the minutes of the June meeting look good to me. Did anyone have any other issues with them? Could somebody approve, suggest we approve them, make a motion for approval? Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. The third item is the wireless facilities ordinance review and recommendation. And before the presenter from the Cohen group gets on, I'd just like to say a few brief things. There's a, there's a commission or committee in Radnor called the Citizens Communications Council. They're mandated to consider items like this, and here are items like this out, and that's, they bring a certain expertise to the specific item, like wireless facilities. They haven't met since 2018, but I was concerned that they not, I was concerned that they should be part of this process. I understand why the planning commission is going to hear this, but I also think this specific commission in Radnor should hear this. So I've been told that they will hear this as well as us. The other, the other thing I'll say before the presenter begins is we're, townships are losing control of this ordinance and what can be in this ordinance, and the government is controlling that, the PUC here is controlling that. So I wanted to make sure that during this presentation, the Cohen group, who by the way are experts in this field rewriting this type of ordinance, sticks to what's pertinent for us, like talks about what things we are in control of in this ordinance, and avoids getting caught in like the metrics and the weeds of this very, very entailed ordinance. So that's what I hope we get, and Steve, I know has talked to the presenter. So with that said, I think what we're going to do is hear what the Cohen group has suggests, and then we're going to take a month, and we're going to, the planning commission is going to take that month so we have time to vet this ourselves, and I can do my stupid little best practice matrix about other townships. And then next month, well, the Cohen group would come back to us for us for approval or not. So that's, that's the way I hoped we could set this up, and staff seemed like fine with that. So given that, I guess we're waiting to hear the presentation. Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me. My name is Mike Roberts. I'm an attorney with the Cohen Law Group, as has been stated. Just a bit of background about our firm, I appreciate being referred to as experts. We are a law firm that specializes in representing municipal government clients exclusively in cable, broadband, wireless, and other telecommunications matters. I find it important to clarify that we do not represent the industry, nor have we ever represented the industry. We represent, again, exclusively municipal governments in this very specific area. And we've been working with township staff over the past couple months to develop this wireless communications facilities management ordinance. I do have a PowerPoint prepared to go along with my remarks here. I'm going to try to share that now, and I hope I am successful in doing so. Let's see here. Can everyone see that now? Is that visible on your end?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So just off the bat, I want to jump in, and there will be a bit of background here. I will address the specific questions that were asked of me earlier today, kind of addresses what we can, can have some input on, also what we can't have input on under federal law, as well as things to focus on over the next month. But I think some background is necessary before we dive into those questions. So what the ordinance does overall is it establishes requirements for wireless communications facilities, generally both inside and outside the public rights of way. And there are three main types of wireless communications facility. There's the tower-based wireless communications facility, the non-tower wireless communications facility, and the small wireless communications facility. And I have on the next couple slides a few photo examples of each of those. But ultimately, this ordinance brings the Township Code into compliance with federal law, which most recently was updated back in 2018, as well as with state law. And state law was updated by what's known as Act 50 about a week ago. So this is an evolving field, one that's evolving quickly and regularly. So it's something that we are working to bring the Township Code into compliance with. So with that said, I do want to address what these facilities actually look like, right? Because the ordinance is broken down section by section, with each section addressing a different type of wireless communications facility. And it's important to know, be able to visualize what exactly those facilities look like. So the first and the most traditional type of facility we have is the tower-based wireless communications facility. This is the tower that you see driving down the turnpike in spades, off on a hill somewhere outside of the public rights of way, typically somewhere between 100 and 200 feet in height. These are, in the proposed ordinance, referred to as a tower-based wireless communications facility. The important thing to remember about these facilities, other than the general kind of mental image of them, is that anything that requires the installation of a new support structure, so these are called lattice-style towers here, there are monopoles that are just a large pole. If the proposed site requires the installation of a new structure, it's considered to be a tower-based wireless communications facility. Next, we have the non-tower wireless communications facility, and it is the exact inverse of the tower-based. If the site does not require the installation of a new support structure, it is considered to be, under this ordinance, a non-tower wireless communications facility. You'll see the example images I have here are rooftop antennas, but these can be located on water towers, they can be located on grain silos on rare occasion, they can also be located on existing towers, whether that be a tower that's installed solely for wireless communications, whether it be a tower that's installed for electric lines, really any tall structure that can handle the load can be used to support a non-tower wireless communications facility. Again, bearing in mind that these are installations where no new structure has to be installed. Now, both of those facilities have kind of a subtype of wireless communications facility, and this is what we're going to focus on the most because it's the most frequently deployed today, and that's the small wireless communications facility. These facilities are, as the name implies, a good bit smaller than the tower-based and non-tower wireless communications facility, and they're also subject to an array of additional regulations at both the federal and state level. So the 2018 FCC order that I mentioned, as well as Pennsylvania's recent Act 50, address exclusively these wireless communications facilities. They can go on a new pole in the public rights of way, they can go on an existing pole, a traffic signal, light pole, anything that falls under a certain dimensional requirement that I'll talk about a little bit later, is considered to be a small wireless communications facility. These are located, again, primarily in the public rights of way, although they can be located outside the public rights of way, and they are far closer to home. So they're in residential neighborhoods, areas of higher traffic, areas of higher demand, and as you can see from these images, there are an array of configurations, an array of aesthetic deployments that you see when it comes to the small wireless communications facility. The most typical form of small wireless communications facility we see is what you have at the top right here and the bottom left. Those are on a wooden utility pole. At the top, we have what we refer to as can antenna or cylindrical antenna, goes right on top of the pole. Bottom left, we have more 5G equipment, radio head units that are kind of box-shaped, often can be deployed below the can antennas at the top right. Then you see in the top middle, we have a deployment on a sidearm light pole. We have them in the middle here on cable strand, and there's a couple more examples you'll see here of different configurations that we have for the small wireless communications facility. So when considering each of the sections of the proposed ordinance, it's important to keep in mind what exactly the regulations are applicable to, because a lot of the control that we have and a lot of the control we want to exercise here is based on aesthetic impact, preserving the character of our neighborhoods, of our community, and ensuring that we mitigate the aesthetic impact of these facilities as best possible. When it comes to the small wireless communications facility, I want to touch on just a couple other things, because these are a unique animal in the world of wireless communications facility deployment. Number one, they're deployed to boost what is known as capacity, not coverage. So we all see these commercials for Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, that say they have 99% coverage nationally, and that's true. Coverage, you know, just the availability of a signal somewhere is not an issue for wireless providers today by large. What their issue is, is sufficient capacity, because the demand on their networks is so high, they have to deploy facilities within the coverage area of a larger tower-based wireless facility, for example, to handle increased demand. These are often residential neighborhoods, commercial districts, things like that where people are present in dense numbers, whether that be all day or at specific periods during the day, and these small facilities have to be deployed to meet that demand. They're installed by two different types of entity, and it's something that the township will see in both forms. And the first is the wireless carrier, there are three of those now, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile, but also the wireless contractor. Now, these are companies that deploy wireless facilities, but they don't actually offer the service, right? So they build these small wireless facilities, and occasionally tower-based and non-tower facilities, and effectively rent the coverage that those facilities afford to the big three. They are public utilities in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but as we'll talk about in a little bit, this Act 50 that passed about a week ago, two weeks ago, has changed that landscape and resubjected them to local regulation. The important thing to bear in mind with these facilities is that they are being deployed in massive numbers. The most recent data we have was from the end of 2018, when it was estimated that 150,000 of these small wireless communications facilities were deployed nationally. At the time of this estimate, it was estimated that 455,000 would be deployed by the end of 2020, and 800,000 by the end of 2026. It's important for me to note that these numbers are pre-COVID-19 pandemic, so I would venture a guess that those numbers are significantly higher because the pandemic exposed in an even greater spotlight the gaps in capacity that so many of these networks have. So with that said, I want to, again, briefly cover the legal rights that municipalities have when it comes to these facilities. It is a complex area of the law, one that has been modified by FCC order over the years. There are conflicting state and federal level requirements, but it's something that I think bears discussion to a certain degree before we dive into the actual requirements of the ordinance as well. The base level of this regulatory authority for local governments comes from the Telecommunications Act of 1996. And what this primarily does is it preserves local zoning authority over the placement, construction, and modification of wireless facilities. So our entire ability to regulate these facilities comes from the Telecommunications Act of 1996, and the Act initially proposed five limitations, restrictions, regulations on the exercise of that authority. And a couple of them are very important for our purposes, and a couple are just ones that we need to keep in mind. The first is that local governments cannot regulate wireless services based on the environmental or health effects of radio frequency emissions. This can be of concern to residents, officials, staff, staff members, and it is something that the FCC has sole authority over, and local governments are permitted only, under both federal and state law, to require proof of compliance with the FCC standards. But we can't impose additional standards beyond those promulgated by the FCC. We also can't deny a facility based solely on concerns over these emissions to the extent that the proposed facility does comply with the FCC standards. The second point here is the most important one for the, the planning commission to keep in mind as you review the ordinance, and that is the idea of prohibition or effective prohibition of wireless facilities and wireless service. So this is the lens that we have to look at all requirements for wireless facilities regulation. Prohibition is an easy one. The township is not permitted under federal law to say no wireless facilities are permitted to be deployed in township. That is a facial prohibition, is a moratorium, as it's often referred to under federal law, and it cannot be in place under federal law. Effective prohibition, this second version, is more important for our consideration. So what this means is imposing a requirement that's so burdensome that a wireless provider either could not possibly comply with it technologically. So a good example is all wireless facilities have to be placed underground. These are antennas, they cannot be placed underground and still function within the realm of the technology that exists today. So that would be an effective prohibition. It's not saying no, but it's imposing a requirement that can't be complied with. There are other degrees of effective prohibition, for example, imposing a requirement that requires such additional cost for a wireless provider to actually deploy their facility in compliance with the code. That could be considered an effective prohibition, as well as standing in the way of deployment of new technologies, densification of networks, anything along those lines, that can all be considered an effective prohibition. So when we ask ourselves, can we impose a certain regulation, and that goes for both myself and for the township, that is the lens that we have to consider those regulations through. Will imposition of that requirement amount to an effective prohibition or otherwise violate federal or state law? To quickly go through the others, we can't discriminate against providers of functionally equivalent services. That includes, you know, treating T-Mobile differently than AT&amp;T. We have to act on requests for approval within a reasonable period of time. You'll hear me refer to these as shot clocks, like a basketball shot clock, and any denial of an application for a wireless facility has to be supported by substantial evidence and be issued in writing. These base level requirements were clarified, and you'll see I put quotes around clarified because that, that term is used liberally by the FCC, by numerous FCC orders since their enactment. To touch on the big one that we have to consider, the 2018 FCC order, this touches on specifically small wireless communications facilities. It defines that term. As I mentioned, it's a dimensional definition only, it's not limited to any specific technology or any specific type of deployment. So long as the facility is 50 feet or less in height, the antenna is three cubic feet or less in volume, and all other equipment is 28 cubic feet or less in volume, it is considered a small wireless communications facility, and it's subject to the both federal and state level, I would call them privileges that are afforded to these facilities, and our ability to regulate the facilities is limited if they meet this definition. The order created new shot clocks, those timeframes for review of these applications, they're, they're very burdensome. It's 60 calendar days for co-located antennas, that's an antenna on an existing structure, and 90 calendar days for a small wireless facility that requires a new pole. Most difficult of all, for the township to consider whether an application is complete, so to perform an initial review of an application, we have only 10 calendar days. So from the date that that application is received, to the date that we inform the applicant that the application is either complete or incomplete, is 10 calendar days. Beyond that timeframe, we forfeit the right to request additional information, and is deemed complete by operation of federal law. This order also limits fees that we can charge for these facilities to cost recovery and creates what are known as presumptively reasonable fee ceilings for small wireless communications facilities. This is reflected at the state level as well, which I'll talk about here in the next slide. And it also establishes requirements for aesthetic standards relating to small wireless communications facilities. So any requirements that the township would put in place relating to the design of small wireless facilities specifically, they have to be very concrete, they have to be spelled out somewhere in some either codified or printed manual guidebook code requirement, however we decide to go about it. But there are very burdensome requirements for these facilities. As I mentioned, on June 30, the State General Assembly passed what's known as Act 50. It is the final version of a bill that the wireless industry has been pushing for in the state for, gosh, about five years now. You probably have heard from our firm as a municipality about past iterations of this bill that were much less municipally friendly. What this bill ultimately does is it establishes additional requirements at the state level for small wireless communications facilities defined in the same way as they are under the federal 2018 Third Report and Order. Largely, it mirrors the requirements of federal law, but it does impose a few additional requirements, as well as clarifies the operation of certain other issues under the FCC order. Most important for our consideration of the proposed ordinance here is that it states that small wireless communications facilities in the right of way, now bear in mind that all Act 50 requirements are for facilities in the right of way. It states that all of those facilities must be treated as a permitted use. They can't go through conditional use or special exception approval, and they have to be permitted in all township zoning districts. It also imposes additional requirements for applications, what information we're permitted to request, what certain information looks like if it is requested, how an applicant can batch applications, which is submitting an application for multiple facilities under the umbrella of a single application. It imposes additional shot clock timeframes relating to resubmission of applications after denial, and it again reflects the fees that are established at the federal level in a slightly different way, but in a way that the sample fee schedule that has been provided to the township nonetheless complies with. So all of this kind of spectrum of federal and state regulation, legal standards that we have to address are addressed in the proposed ordinance here. And you'll see that all of these requirements for small wireless communications facilities bears on why these are treated as a separate type of facility under the ordinance and not rolled into the tower-based or non-tower wireless communications facility umbrella. So with all of that background said, it only took me, I think, 19 slides to get to the actual ordinance itself. I want to just touch on what the ordinance does and then answer the specific questions that were posed earlier today. What the ordinance does is it fully repeals and replaces Article 28 of the Township Code, which were the existing provisions for wireless communications facilities. Under the previous iteration of the code, what are now small wireless communications facilities were treated as tower-based, non-tower wireless communications facilities. And it's crucial that we separate those out, because if we don't, we are either going to overapply regulations to small wireless communications facilities that we're not permitted to under federal and state law, or we're going to underregulate the facilities that we are permitted to regulate to a greater degree, tower-based wireless communications facilities and non-tower wireless communications facilities. So the ordinance first establishes all of the necessary definitions that apply to these provisions. We establish the definitions as part of Article 28, we don't roll them into the larger zoning definitions because they are so hyper-specific to this area, and a number of them likely touch on or overlap with other definitions in the zoning code. These definitions are primarily taken from federal law, whether it be the Telecommunications Act or any of the subsequent FCC orders. A couple of them are taken from Act 50, but as I mentioned, that largely mirrors what is in place in federal law. The ordinance also establishes requirements that are specific to each type of wireless communications facility. So you'll see that it's divided into a section applicable to tower-based wireless communications facilities and regulations that make sense for that type of deployment that applies specifically to the practical and legal realities of a tower-based wireless communications facility. The same goes for non-tower wireless communications facilities, which are subject to their own section, their own set of regulations. And then finally, small wireless communications facilities. This addresses facilities both inside and outside the rights of way in the township. It's important to note that the small wireless communications facility section incorporates by reference what's known as the Small Wireless Communications Facility Design Manual. This includes all of the aesthetic standards that apply to small wireless communications facilities. Now, as I mentioned, under federal law, the FCC stated that those requirements have to be spelled out, they called it published in advance. So those requirements are codified or contained within this design manual. Under Act 50, the state legislator went a step further and said that these requirements also have to be objected. So it's important then that any requirements we have in terms of aesthetics of small wireless facilities be very clearly spelled out in the Small Wireless Communications Facility Design Manual. And the reason we impose these requirements in a separate document in this sort of advisory handbook is that that allows a greater degree of flexibility to the township when it comes to updating or modifying these requirements. These standards are something that evolve with time, with technology, and with township preference. As you see more and more applications for small wireless facilities, it is natural that you will learn more about these facilities, and your preferences may change. We want you to be able to respond to those preferences efficiently, and in a way that allows you to capture, hopefully, the next facility that is applied for. So that's the reasoning behind codifying these standards in the design manual rather than reflecting them in the actual code itself. And finally, the ordinance, perhaps most importantly, brings the Township Code into compliance with applicable law and addresses all types of possible deployments. This is an area where there is quite a bit of litigation. The providers grow more and more litigious with each passing day. Our goal is always to keep our clients out of court, to avoid litigation to the degree possible. So the township's proposed ordinance here is written with that goal in mind, ensuring compliance, ensuring that we're regulating these facilities to the degree that we're permitted to under federal law, but that we're not going beyond those boundaries in the way that will land the township in court. So to address the questions that were asked of me, first off, we have what can we control? And these will be some broad ideas that I hope to clarify a bit in my exposition of each of these points. But first, we have both most requirements for non-tower wireless communications facilities and most requirements for tower-based wireless communications facilities. So as I mentioned, the 2018 FCC order and Act 50 apply only to small wireless communications facilities, Act 50 only small wireless communications facilities in the rights of way. So what that means is that the sections that apply to non-tower wireless communications facilities and tower-based wireless communications facilities generally are Generally are subject to the preferences of the township. So any of those requirements that don't touch on specific things I mentioned. Um, under federal law, most importantly, and the one that I get asked about most frequently. The shot clock timeframes, those are written in stone and we cannot change them, they're the timing of approval section under the ordinance. Um, anything that does not fall under that umbrella. Is something that the township has a great degree of input on. Um, when it comes to aesthetic requirements for these facilities. Um, they do not have to be objective, they do not have to be published in advance, these can go through conditional use and special exception approval. In fact, I encourage that they do go through special exception or conditional use approval process. Um, that allows the township to exercise the degree of discretion. That makes sense for a deployment of this impact, you know. Certainly for a tower-based wireless communications facility, which can be, you know, over a hundred feet in height. Um, has a pretty significant impact, we want to ensure that we're addressing these um, to the greatest degree possible. Um, we also have control over how applications are pro- are processed. Um, and that contains a number of things, um, who applications are submitted to. Whether it be a conditional use or special exception process. What materials are required within an application submission. So I have laid out kind of base level recommendations for all of these things, but they are all up to the township. Um, an important point that I want to make is that my goal is not to prescribe. A one-size-fits-all ordinance to the township, um, I want to tailor the ordinance to the needs of the township to. Um, what makes sense for the township and. Something that fits into the township's existing processes, so what you have in front of you. Um, brings the code into compliance with federal law based on our experience. Um, writing, you know, hundreds of these ordinances to this point. Um, sets you up very well for processing each of these types of applications, but to the extent that something. Um, doesn't fit within township processes or anything like that, um, I welcome any comments that the township might have. Um, also you have a degree of control over design requirements for small wireless communication facilities. And this is a very important um, thing to focus on when you review the proposed ordinance and the design manual. Um, as I mentioned, under state and federal law, these requirements have to be very clearly spelled out. Um, they have to be objective and they have to be published in advance. They also have to be reasonable. Um, which under state law is technically feasible, which is a defined term. In the proposed ordinance, and what that means again is that they have to be something that can actually be accomplished within the realm of essentially reality. Uh, which includes reasonable financial reality for the providers. Um, so when reviewing the design manual for small wireless communication facilities, I surely encourage you. To think of what these facilities might look like, you know, refer back to uh, the example photos that I. Uh, included earlier, and I'm happy to, to send this presentation around if you'd like me to after um, I'm finished. Um, and consider any additional requirements or different requirements that the township would like to see. When it comes to these facilities being deployed in the public rights of way.
Hey Mike.
Now that brings us to the question of what can't we control, and it's often in the realm of wireless facilities management. More simple to touch on what we can't do than what we can do, what we can't do. Is change again the shot clock timeframes for decision on an application. Those are written again in stone at both the federal and state level. And the penalties for violation of these shot clock timeframes are pretty harsh. Um, they're different for the different types of wireless facilities, whether it be a deemed approved. Uh, remedy for tower-based and non-tower facilities, which means that once those shot clock timeframes run. And for these facilities, it's ninety or one hundred and fifty days. Once those shot clock timeframes run, the application is simply deemed approved by operation of federal law, whether it complies with the code or not. Whether the township would have approved it or not. By virtue of failing to act within the timeframe is deemed approved. And for small wireless communications facilities. The remedy is expedited injunctive relief in federal court. So effectively, the wireless provider would go to federal court. Sue the township and seek an injunction from a federal judge that says they can build the proposed facility and the township has to issue. Any requisite permits for the building of that facility. Um, again, we also have to permit small wireless communications facilities in the right of way. As a permitted use in all zoning districts. Now, the code provisions that surround that permitted use, what they are required to comply with, what their application process looks like, what's included in an application. The design manual provisions, all of that shapes what that permitted use looks like. But act fifty clearly states no conditional use, no special exception, has to be a permitted use in all zoning districts. So those surrounding requirements for small wireless facilities are very important, again, I encourage you to ensure that they make sense for the township. And that we're capturing any township preferences that you might have in those requirements. Um, we also can't control that there will be some facilities everywhere. Again, the question of effective prohibition comes up. We have to allow the providers to address. Service, coverage, capacity gaps wherever they would exist, so they have to have some opportunity to deploy some wireless facility. In all areas of the township, whether that be a small wireless communications facility in the public rights of way. That's the easiest one because we have to allow them to do that. Or whether it makes more sense to allow for a larger tower that would cover a larger radius. Um, or a non-tower facility that would cover a larger radius. All of that means that we have to allow them to deploy something everywhere. Um, and again, when considering the requirements. It's important to think, are we capturing every area of the township? Are there areas where a different type of deployment might make more sense than say a new pole in the public rights of way? Um, again, we can't control radio frequency emissions, we can only require compliance with the federal standards. We can't. Um, differ from the fees for small wireless communications facilities specifically that are established under. What is now state and federal law, um, that fee is two hundred and seventy dollars per site per year. Um, proposed fee schedule imposes exactly that maximum level fee. Um, with the caveat that if the township were to determine that its actual costs for managing small wireless facilities in the public rights of way exceed that amount. We are permitted to do so once we have shown that our costs actually exceed that amount. And we will. Be sued by the wireless providers and we will have to justify those costs in court, but both federal and state law do allow for that sort of excess. Fee imposition to the extent that it's based on actual cost. And then finally, we can't impose requirements that are not technically feasible. Again, this comes down to effective prohibition as all of these statements do. Um, to the extent that we, for example, want to limit the height of a small wireless communications facility to ten feet. It's not something that can be complied with under current technology, it will render those facilities useless and it's not. A requirement that can be put in place, now that's obviously an extreme example. But that is a standard that we have to look at all of our regulations through. So the question of what should the planning commission focus on, this is a long ordinance, I understand that and it is a complicated ordinance, I understand that as well. So some guidance as to what makes the most sense and sense, excuse me, to focus your energy on. Um, first and foremost, the design guidelines for small wireless communications facilities. Um, again, these will be the closest to home. These will be the most frequently deployed. And looking forward over the next, you know, five, ten, fifteen years. These are the facilities that enable five G, these are the next generation facilities. That are being deployed in, as I mentioned at the top of the presentation, in massive numbers. Um, this is an area where we do have control over these facilities, however limited the rest of our control may be. And it's something that I surely encourage you to focus um, your attention on. Um, I also encourage you to focus your intention on the timeframes for approval, so as I mentioned, we can't change them. But we do want to make sure that whatever approval process, review process we have in place. Allows us to comply with those shot clock timeframes. Um, they are in section, excuse me, subsection M of the general wireless communications facilities provisions. Um, there is a table within the ordinance itself that establishes each of those shot clock timeframes. When you're considering what the review and approval process looks like. Keep those in the back of your head, um, make sure that whoever's. Kind of the first line of defense and speed of one of these applications is able to respond. Within the notice of incompleteness timeframe, whether that be thirty days or ten, total process is capable. Of being completed within the timeframe required for decision on the application. Um, environments, things like that, that can kind of draw that timeframe out. Um, as I mentioned, the penalties for violation of the shot clocks are swift. If it's a tower-based wireless communications facility or non-tower, um, that's that deemed approved remedy. Or expensive, and that's litigation for the small wireless communications facilities. Um, also focus your attention on where these facilities are permitted outside the rights. As I mentioned, small wireless communications facilities in the rights of way have to be permitted everywhere. But we can decide where the other facilities are permitted. I have proposed district-by-district requirements based on the existing code provisions for the non-tower. Tower-based wireless communications facilities provision. And I've just reflected the all-district um, requirement for inside the rights of way for small wireless communications facilities. But we have um, in the past included requirements that they not be deployed outside the right, the rights of way in residential zoning districts or areas where they may be of more significant impact. Um, finally, as I've reiterated a few times now, focus on the practical impact of the facilities. Um, it's easy to get into the weeds on the legal requirements here. But what we're really trying to do is ensure that these facilities are deployed in a way that makes sense for the township. Um, think of what the facilities will look like, where does a big one hundred and twenty-foot tower make sense? Where does a forty-foot utility pole with an antenna on top of it make sense? Um, are there areas where it may have an impact on public safety, there are areas where it may beat pedestrian traffic. Um, those are areas where we may want to um. Have a specific focus on whether it be in the ordinance itself or in the design manual. And then finally, what to consider for the next month, for our, for our next meeting, um, and this is probably going to. Reiterate some things that I've already said. But first, consider where the township should permit each type of facility outside the right of way, as I just mentioned. Um, consider what the preferred application and review process is for each type of wireless communications facility. So outside of those small wireless communication facilities in the public rights of way. We can decide what that approval process looks like, what that review process looks like, whether it be. Permitted use, special exception, conditional use. Um, and also who receives an application, who does the preliminary review? Who issues the permits? Um, any of those more granular steps in that process, we can consider what those look like as well. Um, consider what aesthetic requirements the township wants to impose on small wireless communication facilities specifically. But really any wireless communications, so um, if we have specific concerns for say a rooftop antenna that would be a non-tower wireless communications facility. That's something that we should reflect in the code. Um, I often try to bake in a bit more discretion into those aesthetic requirements for the non-small wireless communications facilities simply because we can. It allows us to address the um, kind of specific realities of each deployment a bit better. We do want to address any of those instances that we have. Um, also consider uh, the format of the ordinance, now I've proposed again splitting it up based on facility, which I think makes the most sense from a legal standpoint. But the ordinance is intended to act essentially as a guidebook um, for application and review. So I want you to be able to walk through these provisions when you receive an application. And have the review process make sense, make sense to both current staff and future staff. And ensure that it lines up with what the township um, understands, what the township prefers. So if there's anything that needs to be changed from that level, that's another thing to consider um, when reviewing the ordinance itself. Um, consider what the township wants to see included in an application, so again, I've included specific requirements for each of these. But if there are certain things that jump to mind. That we have to see in an application before we're comfortable approving um, an application for a wireless communications facility. And those things are not expressly mentioned in the ordinance, um, that's something that we can add, and that's something that we should add to ensure that we're receiving. All of the, all of the information we need to. And then finally, if there are any procedural steps that are inherent to township procedures, so if there is a permit step. That's not expressly reflected in the ordinance and should be. If there is a layer of approval, I know we mentioned the, the, I think it's the citizens communication council. Um, if they need to be roped in some fashion, if there are anything specific to township procedure. That we feel should be spelled out here, um, that's something that we can add as well. So that's another thing to focus on as we move forward through the process. Uh, so with all of that said. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, uh, realizing that I've taken up quite a bit of your time already, but uh, any questions now?
Yeah, hey Mike, it's Matt.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so. Thank you for the thorough presentation and thank you for the uh, guide, guidelines for us as we move forward. Um, timeline-wise, to come into compliance, is there, is there a deadline for us?
Yeah, so the deadline is, um, and forgive me, I don't have the exact date, but it's a hundred and twenty days from passage of. Um, act fifty specifically. Um, so to come into compliance with those requirements, we have a hundred and twenty days. Um, with that said, if we go beyond that, we don't forfeit the right to come into compliance, but applicants are allowed to substitute the rights for act fifty. Um, beginning on that one hundred and twenty-first day. Um, for the twenty eighteen FCC order, that's all in place now, um, if an applicant submits an application. That would fall under those requirements, they are currently in place, so it's certainly something that I encourage us to. Um, complete in as timely a fashion as possible, but we do have a, a pretty significant window for the act fifty requirements. I think that that date is August twenty-ninth. Um, but don't quote me on that, I'd have to double check, but I'm pretty sure that's the date that uh, that act goes into effect.
So, oh, that's good to know, but um, in terms of. The recommendations and the way that you uh. Created this, the new ordinance that we're looking at. Uh, how much nuance did you capture? About Radnor? Because, you know, Radnor's a, you know, it's a different place from other townships, it's. Has its own unique issues and especially around wireless, there's a lot of. You know, public interest in how this all goes down. Um, so you're, what, you didn't spend time here, right? So you, is it, it, one thing we could do is probably add some of the nuance. If we can identify that, that would make us different from other townships. And that might be effective to get into, or get that into the ordinance. Um, I mentioned there is a citizens communication council that exists in Radnor. And they're specifically. Charged with doing this type of work. The work that we will be doing, but they're, they're specifically charged with it, what do you, do you think that group should be activated for this?
I, I leave that to you, uh, if that's directed at me. Um, certainly, I think in terms of capturing the nuance of the township, um, I, I surely welcome your comments on that front. As, as you kind of aptly said, I do not live in Radnor township. Um, I do not have, uh, you know, kind of boots on the ground there beyond, you know, the work I've done with township staff to date, so if there anything. Um, or if there is anything in terms of um, specific requirements to the township, that is absolutely. I think something that you could, you could focus your review on and we can work to incorporate within the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just so you, just for everybody's edification. So the adminis- township administration fully intends to provide this ordinance, draft ordinance to the communications council for their review. So the, the idea is that this is going to be a concurrent review process. If we are able to assemble that group. Uh, to have them review it as well as the planning commission. And just for every, just while we're, we're here, I emailed Mike to get the PowerPoint. I'll forward that to all the planning commission members, staff, and we'll post that on the engineering website. So it's there, because it's a lot of information that everybody's taking in tonight along with the ordinance, so you'll have that to study, so to speak, over the month. Shoot your questions to me and I'll send them to Mike en masse uh, for next month when the time comes, after you've had a chance to digest.
Yeah, and, and Steve, I'm almost thinking that um. I would almost like to have a separate meeting of the planning commission on this subject. Because I think we have to get the public uh, sort of looped in here in a major way, because I don't want to hear about. I don't want to create an ordinance that then flies in the face of what the real public sentiment is about this, and at least to hear what people have to say because. Wireless communications has been sort of an issue for years here on how it's handled and. So if that's possible, um, I just think that it's a daunting task to. Look at an ordinance rewrite when your planning commissioners are not like scientists and politicians and I think we need. I don't think in a, in a month we can actually be where we need to be. But I think in two months we might, but I think we also need to get something in front of the public. Or at least have the public aware of what's going on here and have them hear. So we hear what people actually have to say, that's, I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that, but it's, it feels to me. That's, I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that, but it's, it feels to me like, you know, we have an expert in Mike, and we have our staff who's been dealing with Mike, but we haven't really had time to digest what you guys have come up with in terms of what's right for Radnor, in my view. I'd like to hear what some of the other commissioners think about it.
I have an early question, Steve. Have you had meetings, I mean, extended meetings with our consultant?
Yes, so myself, the solicitor, the township manager, my colleague Kevin Koshansky. So what you're seeing, what the draft is in the packet, is the final version of what staff had asked to be in, within the confines of what we are able to do so. So a lot of that was in the design manual and some of the other items, Solicitor Rice and the manager also.
I mean, I see one or two minor things that I wish we could get clarity on, whether it comes from staff or our review. I saw something about historical preservation structures or not to get these facilities. And it says historical preservation structures that are currently protected by that or that could be. That's very open-ended and loose. I mean, just, are there a lot of spots like that in this?
I'll defer to our resident expert in Mike. Or, my thought is, let's, let's group these questions. Like I say, so if you wouldn't mind, the Planning Commission, email your questions to me. I'll cut and paste them into one large email to Mike, and that, I think that'll save everybody's time as far as looking at everything and any duplication of questions. And then we can get that answered, Skip.
Any other commissioner comment? I assume this will be on the August agenda, so I guess we do have some homework here.
I think it's a lot, considering that we spent months and months on Villanova, and that was one area of the township, and this is township-wide, and we get six weeks. I think that's a lot.
I totally agree that it seems rushed to me. I feel rushed here, I feel anxious. I guess, Mike, I guess we can, we can take more time if we have to, right?
Absolutely. So the thing to bear in mind with these facilities is that if an application's received, we have to process it. So we'd have to process it under the current code requirements. That is the only pitfall we have when it comes to delaying this. But with that said, I do encourage you to take the time that is needed to review this adequately. You know, we don't want to rush it through. But do bear in mind that if, you know, Verizon comes in tomorrow, submits an application for a new pole in the rights of way, we have to process that requirement under the current code and compliance with federal law. So to the extent that anything in the current code, it would be in violation of federal law. Our hands are tied with how we process that. I don't think, and I can circle back, confirm this, I don't think that would be of any extreme detriment currently. Certainly with the Act 50 requirements not governing this yet, but it's something to bear in mind. That time is, to a degree of the essence, but we absolutely can take the time needed to review.
Do you have any examples of ones in townships near us that we could help jog our, help us understand what some of the questions are that we should be asking? Because the list of what we can control was not very impressive. It kind of seemed like you're going to choose whether John or Janie is going to review the application that day, and that's kind of about it.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear that question.
It was kind of two-part. It was, first of all, do you have any examples of one of these set up in some townships near us that we can see some of the things they brought to the table, that we can maybe help jog our, jog us to think about some things about our township? Just an example to follow of what kind of questions to ask, because we don't always know what kind of questions that we should even be asking until all of a sudden something gets put up someplace and we didn't know we had an option. But I will say that what, the list that you put up there of what we can control was not impressive. Like, I just felt like you were gonna, we just had to choose if John or Janie was going to review the application that day, and that was about it. You know, I didn't see where we had much control over anything. You're making it seem like we do, but I don't, doesn't look like we do.
Yeah, so I can check to see if we have done any for nearby municipalities. I don't know off the top of my head who that might be, but I can look at our past ordinances to see if we have any that could be helpful on that front, as well as if I can pull any from elsewhere that might be helpful in terms of what our discretion looks like. I mean, that's primarily going to fall under the design standards more than anything else. But, I mean, you're absolutely right that our hands are tied by state and federal law to a degree. But design will be the greatest degree of control we have over small wireless communications facilities. But I will have to follow up on whether I have any example ordinances or currently enacted ordinance that could be helpful on that front. Noting, of course, that Act 50 has just been enacted at the state level, so they won't capture Act 50 yet, just because we haven't really done any that have captured that act, given that it's zoning. But I can, I can check and see what I can provide.
So I had a question for you. You mentioned a moment ago, you know, if we receive an application tomorrow from Verizon, you know, we wouldn't have this, the new protocol in place. What is the existing protocol? How many applications have we done in the last 12 months or last five years? How have they been handled?
Is the question what the current township protocol is?
Yes.
I don't know offhand. I believe it would go through a conditional use or special exception process if it were a tower, would be essentially a tower-based facility in the public rights of way. But I have to refer back to the current code.
So as far as the small facilities go, how many small facilities have we received an application for in the last, you know, one year or five years?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. I'm not aware of any within the right-of-way, as what Mike was talking about on top of the telephone pole. All of the applications we've been receiving are co-locations on either existing structures, where there's existing facilities already there. So that's the primary number of applications that we've been receiving are for co-locations on towers that already exist.
Okay, so just to understand, you know, when we're talking right-of-way, if, if someone has a building, they can put one of these facilities on the building without coming to us?
Where there's already a facility there, and yes, it would not come to this board. It's handled administratively, or if it's a brand-new application, a brand-new location through our design review board.
So are we not concerned with, with facilities that are not in the right-of-way?
That's through a special approval process such as conditional use. So you're talking a tower-based facility?
I guess any of the three.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look tower-based. It's, I believe it's conditional use in certain districts in the township.
So basically, this is saying that one of the small ones can be in the right-of-way, and everybody has a front yard, and everybody has probably a right-of-way in their front yard. If your right-of-way is 12-foot deep into your front yard, they can put one in your front yard.
There are regulations for these facilities within the rights of way, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So then the next question, Matt, you said that, you know, we need to meet or put something in place. Do you have a suggestion at this point, or is that something we need to still think about?
Well, just to give you the perspective from the Board of Commissioners, when they last addressed this issue and they mandated that we, the PC, undertake, undertake studying the ordinance draft, Bill White and the commissioners all agreed that there's very little we can do to make any difference. But, and it was actually said at that meeting that the Citizens Communications Council was, I mean, Bill White said basically, why waste the time to go through that group when we have so little control over this? But I guess where I come from is like, well, if there's some control, and we can figure out what that control is, maybe try to best customize it to Radnor. You know, so, but I, to say I know how to do that, I don't, I don't. This is all too new to me.
I don't think the manager put it that way, because in speaking to him, he's the one who, you know, he's saying, hey, it's going to go through that. I might go through the Citizens Communication Council if we are able to assemble them as a group. My suggestion is, we've taken in a lot of information tonight. You have a PowerPoint presentation, we have a draft ordinance, and a lot of questions and conversation. So, understanding we're going to come back next month and really roll up our sleeves and dive into it, again, I request the PC and any of staff, shoot their questions to me over the next couple of weeks, once you've had a chance to review it. And then I need to send it to Mike and give him a chance to answer everything and put it in some format for the group. But that's just my thought. Before we, we're diving deep when we really don't have all the knowledge we want. We just, we just got all this stuff tonight, so to speak, in the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I agree, Steve, so that's fine. Let's proceed that way. And Mike, once again, a very good presentation, thank you for that. And we're all looking forward to reading, getting our own copies of the PowerPoint, that'd be great.
Can I ask just one question to Mike before we lose him?
Thank you all for having me, I'll follow up with the PowerPoint now, okay?
Mike, are you still there?
Yes, yes.
I just have one quick question with regard to the business side of your presentation. You mentioned that the township could charge, like, was it a maximum, like, about $250 per location for, for someone to install a, what I refer to as probably one of the smaller antennas? How does that work? So if you have like an independent company like Crown and Castle, for example, they would contact the township, they would install it, and they would pay the township $250 a year to, for, to use whatever location. They would, and then Crown and Castle, they would go around and rent that space, rent that antenna out to either AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or whoever, whatever carrier that may be, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. So the $270 per site per year that the township is permitted to charge is a right-of-way use fee under state and federal law. So that's the maximum that we can recover. They can then, you know, they enter into basically use agreements of their own with the providers to carry their signal over Crown Castle's facilities, essentially.
Why, to me, it seems like the town, our township, or whatever municipality it may be, is just leaving a lot of money on the table for the municipality versus the private sector.
That is the unfortunate reality of the law as it applies to these facilities. It expressly prohibits local governments from charging revenue-based fees for wireless facilities in the rights of way. That's a large portion of the 2018 order, as well as what's reflected from that same order in Act 50. So our fees are capped, that $270 per site per year, and we can't kind of dip into the revenue portion of a Crown Castle that's using their facilities to provide service to a wireless provider themselves.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Is there any parallel structure for transformers, for example, for PICO on a pole? They don't put transformers on every pole. Is there, does the township get a fee at all for that?
So, and forgive me if I didn't hear the entirety of the question, but I think I did in terms of additional structures beyond these. Most of the equipment is going to be on the pole itself, and that's all considered to be part of the small wireless communications facility. The other portion of the network that we would be able to recover fees for would be the fiber backbone for the network. So all of these facilities, they're not kind of standalone, they are all connected via fiber backhaul. So that's something that we could capture, potentially a linear per foot fee for, it's not subject to that same $270 cap. That's another area that we could capture a fee for. In terms of anything between the facilities themselves, it's solely that fiber backbone. There's no, you know, kind of strand-mounted equipment for a small wireless facility that we would be able to capture a fee for under the code.
I was actually asking a more simplistic question. I wondered if there was any precedent for cable TV control boxes or PICO transformers? That, does the township derive any revenue from those devices, which have nothing to do with wireless service?
Gotcha, forgive me for not, not hearing the end of the question there. So that separates out into two different questions ultimately. So cable, that would all fall under the township's cable franchise agreement. So that would be the best way to capture the maximum revenue for any of those deployments. And that would include cable Wi-Fi. Cable Wi-Fi under Act 50, which would be the kind of strand-mounted boxes in between poles, are not subject to an application process, not really subject to the same fee process as a traditional small wireless communications facility, by virtue of it being subject ultimately to the cable franchise agreement. So I would encourage the township to address that question via the cable franchise agreement, ensuring we're maximizing that franchise fee revenue that we're permitted to derive under the Cable Act rather than the Telecommunications Act. In terms of PICO, as a public utility, we are not permitted to charge much of a fee of PICO at all. Actually, we helped the city of Lancaster a few years ago try to do exactly that, and it went all the way to the state superior court, and they struck down that fee recovery ordinance. By virtue of PICO being a public utility, they're subject to the exclusive jurisdiction of the Public Utility Commission. So any of those kind of regulatory rights are vested with the Public Utility Commission rather than the township. The only instance, and I don't think this is something that would apply to the township, where we could recover a fee for a deployment like PICO would be if the township owned poles. There would be a pole attachment aspect. But in terms of a right-of-way use fee, that's not something that we can, under Pennsylvania law, apply to public utilities.
Any other questions, concerns from the commissioner staff? Any public comment? Hearing none. I thank you very much, Mike, and we'll look forward to more communication with you in the future.
Absolutely, thank you everyone for having me. I will follow up with a copy of the PowerPoint.
Terrific, thanks.
Thank you.
Up next is zoning ordinance amendment, Garrett Hill, and outdoor dining regulations. The zoning amendment is, has to do with 19 houses that have 30-foot height restrictions on Garrett, on Garrett Avenue, I think it is. The outdoor dining regulations, part of this ordinance revision, has to do with enabling outdoor dining in Garrett Hill, where it is presently prohibited. The commissioner in that ward is here, Sean Fari is here. Just for you, a reference point, the Board of Commissioners did hear Sean's presentation on both these items. At, I don't, it was, was it their last, when was it, Sean, was it in March, I think, or was it later than that?
It, it was a while ago. I don't, I don't know, I don't know the exact month.
I think it was in March. But, so the commission voted six to one in favor of sending this along.
Correct.
That's why we're hearing it tonight. One item that the commission, the commission voted on, on sending it along before one commissioner had a chance to ask for consideration of separating these items. In other words, taking outdoor dining and making that its own ordinance rewrite, and taking the height limit and making that its own ordinance. And so, for our purposes, at some point in this discussion, we might want to consider, is this better in two parts than one? And I don't know what else to say, Steve. I mean, how do you want to handle this from here?
I mean, there's, there's three basic items in the proposed, in the draft ordinance. You know, there's the height of the two districts, and then there's the outdoor dining. Maybe we just start with the first that's in the ordinance.
It's, Sean, are you going to present something, or is there going to be some presentation?
No, I'm not presenting, actually Kevin. I, actually, Kevin emailed me about an hour and a half ago, and I stopped what I was doing to come here.
You're more than welcome, but I understand that.
But, no, I mean, I'm happy to help facilitate, answer your questions. You know, this has been going on, just so the board knows and the members at home know. This has been discussed for, going on two years. So, there's really nothing new at this point, but it's always important to, to have the conversation.
Well, from my, from my take on the Board of Commissioners meeting, you made it clear that on the height restriction, that it involves 19 houses, that there's a petition, all 19 owners or residents have signed it, saying they would like freedom from this. You find it discriminatory, as I think you.
I do. I find that it's beyond, so, I think the, it was well-intended, and I don't doubt the intention of the Garrett Hill overlay in the community. But, I mean, at this point, you take a street that is mixed racially. It is not the, probably the least affluent street property value in the ward, and you restrict the height. So, you restrict the value. You know, it's, there's no nice way to say it. It's just unintended institutional racism, as far as I'm concerned. And you wouldn't do it on my street. You wouldn't do it on Foxwood, or, you know, I'm just throwing a, you know, a million-dollar street out there. So, why do it to this street? Why affect these neighbors? And I think that once you are able to, no one's going to take an 800-square-foot house, knock it down, and put another 800-square-foot house up there. So, what happens? These houses get more and more and more, unfortunately, dilapidated, and they turn into college rentals. So, I think if you allow to make these a little bit taller, and you can put families in there, you'd actually help with parking, because you wouldn't have, and Kevin could probably vouch for this. I'm sure he doesn't want to. You know, you're only allowed to have two college kids per house, but they have three or four, and the boyfriends and girlfriends sleep over. And it, you know, it clogs up the street parking lot. So, I think a lot of good could come out, you know, if we, if we look at the changing, changing the height. I think it would make that street much more, be much more of a family, a family and a community street. And that's kind of where I would like to see this, this going.
Is there, is there 30-feet restrictions anywhere else in Garrett Hill?
No. And that's the other problem with the overlay. You have about a 300 or 400, you know, foot radius, and you have five different zonings of commercial and, and residential and, and mixed. So, this is just, you know, a small part of the street, the south side of Garrett Avenue, but not the north side. The north side is allowed to be 35 feet. I just don't think it's, it's fair and it's right, and, you know, the residents, like I said, I think, I think it's fair to say that they agree to that.
Kevin, if I could put you on the spot a little bit, I mean, how do you?
Absolutely.
How do you feel about this, this part of the amendment, the, the height issue?
Well, I think that, as Commissioner Farley said, a lot of work went into creating the Garrett Hill overlay with all good intentions. I do agree with Commissioner Farley that, you know, there does seem to be kind of a disparity between one side of the tracks to the other side. There are significant architectural elements built into the Garrett Hill regulations in terms of the percentage of third floor that can be occupied, roof slopes. Some flat roofs are prohibited in, in certain districts. This amendment isn't addressing any of those. It's just allowing an additional five feet in building height. So, I don't know that there's a huge aesthetic change in what you would see from a 30-foot to a 35-foot house. It's still measured to the ridge of the roof. Every other district in the township is measured to the midpoint. So, there is still some disparity between one side of tracks to the other. I think this amendment goes a long way in kind of slimming that down to provide a little bit more flexibility, while still maintaining the character and all of the work and effort that went in to the original Garrett Hill overlay regulations. And it's basically from Kinda Stoga Road up to the train tracks.
Well, I, I've been talking a lot. Any other commissioners have any thoughts about, two things, about should these two items be bundled? We haven't talked about the, the outdoor dining yet. So, that's one thing, but also about how, about changing the height limit in this one small section of Garrett Hill?
So, I would agree with you that they should not be bundled. They don't even seem related.
I have a question for the audience. Sometimes I used to do this when, prior years. Is anyone here going to speak about the height component of the ordinance? So, maybe we should hear what they have to say.
Sure. That sounds great. We could take public comment, and then if there's more, if there's, if the staff wants to, staff or the board, the board wants to continue talking about it, we can.
I have a part two of that question. Are either of you one of the 19?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sumant Joseph. I've lived at, on 117 Garrett Avenue since 2004. I actually bought it my senior year at Villanova, so I went nighttime, and I worked full-time. And so, I've been through everything, and, you know, from even the, the way the character of the neighborhood has actually changed. A lot of this in 2010 is very different. In 2010, there were a lot of absentee landlords. And now, if you look now, there's been fam, young families moving in. They just started having, you know, we had a few, like, COVID babies and stuff. The other thing I want to explain, too, also visually, what people don't realize is that our south side was all C1 commercial before. And then what they did was, they took half of it, which is the middle, 19 owners, and made them Garrett Hill neighborhood. First time in U.S. history, came up with their own zone code that's actually more restrictive below R1. And then they took the other half and gave them mixed use. And we all pay the same property taxes. The other things to note is, you go, if you look at the actual code, it doesn't make sense at all. And on top of that, you ask, why would, why would they do it? Why would a group of people who are self-appointed? They self-appointed themselves, Radnor Township said, "Well, listen to you guys," and said, they volunteered. Okay, I apologize. They volunteered, but it, they were still not voted in. And they didn't represent any of the, sorry.
They were selected by the Board of Commissioners, so they were voted in.
Okay. But wouldn't it be, make sense that one of them would actually live in the overlay? Not, not one person?
I can't speak to, back then, I've never lived in Garrett Hill. I drive past, and I don't know if the, any of the 19 had an opportunity to volunteer or not.
Back then, we didn't. But what I did was, I actually got petitions of all the owners in there, which is, it's never actually been done. No one ever asked our opinion. No one said, "Let's write this down and say what the owners think," until now. And I represented, by getting those signatures, I feel I can safely represent their, their sentiment. And if you also look at it other ways, just quick background is, we're a really diverse community in those 19 homes alone. But if you look at the group that created this, they don't live in the overlay, and they're all ethnically white. And if you look at the perspective on that, and they, they, the other part of it is, they never imposed it on their own properties. Why would they be, be so vehemently into this idea of the zoning, but not one person said, "Hey, let's do it to our street. Let's do it to Lowry's. Let's do it the, to the north side of Garrett Avenue." The, at the other end of the, and then on top of that, this year, our property taxes doubled 100%. And the fact that my property, our properties, our 19 properties are worth less than our mixed-use neighbors and our R5, and we pay the same property taxes. When we go to sell our homes, we can't even, we can't, with all the restrictive coding, we can't even buy our neighbors and build homes where families can move in, but everyone else can. And it doesn't ma, it, it just, it's not fair, and we want to be treated fairly. Now, the other advantage, too, is what we had before, and, and also with the height restriction. If you look at it, if you actually drive by, the majority of the homes in the 19 homes are actually above 30 feet. They're three stories with an attic, including mine. And so, how is it that this new code actually, it was supposed to update things? It didn't do it. And I, I feel like sometimes, you know, it's easier to double down than to just say, "Let's take a look at things." You know, I think the other advantage is, when you see the fact that the average, I looked at the statistics according to Redfin.com, and they said, "Radnor Township Homes increased in value in the, in one year, factoring COVID, by 21.1%. The average home value in Radnor Township is $775,000." We all pay into the same ta, we have, all have the same tax base. However, is it fair that our property values go down, and families who want to move into Radnor Township just to go to public school have to pay that much to move in? And then on top of that, they can't even add extensions for families, for, you know, for families and kids and growing families, or even try to put driveways in so the kids actually play in their driveways instead of on the street? Which also is another issue, is we have, we're one of the few streets that has permit parking and restricts a lot of the owners to two, two cars, with already other people parking on the street as well. So, this would alleviate, you know, the, from where I'm coming from, before all this, it would have alleviated all these problems, and we wouldn't have had these issues. And I think it actually, Radnor, in the past 10 years, I think the homes would have gone up higher, sold for higher values, and I think families would have been able to do more, and you would have seen a more thriving street. Instead, we can't do much, so it's, all we can do is say, "Let's wait for it to be dilapidated." So, some developer comes in and buys it out for nothing, and says, "Your house is worth less than your neighbor, so I'm going to offer you $200,000, $300,000 less, and we'll scoop it up and kick you out." And I feel, I feel the way the, the zoning was created was the intention. They might have been well-intentioned, but at the same time, you can't just say, "Let's stick all the poor people and all the people of color in one, one section," and, and then eventually force them out because they can't afford to fix up their property like everybody else. It, it just doesn't sound fair. So, the other part of it, too, is, I wanted to bring up a couple of other things real quick, is, we're also, if you look at it, we're, we're basically like the cheapest street on Radnor, in Radnor Township. And we have, we have parks that everyone, everyone in Radnor Township enjoys, but, you know, I think for us to be able to feel fair with our neighbors, I think they got to re, you know, revisit this, the zoning code. And, and, and just ask the people who created it and say, "Why didn't you do it to your properties? It, why did you feel that it was so necessary to do it to someone else's property?" And I feel that the property owner should, who pays the taxes, should have at least a say, if not the right, to what, what their property should be deemed worthy? Not someone who doesn't own property, and members in the, the head members in that group actually don't own property. They're renters. That's crazy. How did renters, just because, and they, they went off on the thing, saying, "How, how did renters say, 'We feel, you know, we have the right to tell people living in a township who are paying top property taxes and own the township, what to do, what their property should be worth, and what they can, can and can't do with their property.'" It, if you just look at the basic of it and go, "Why?", I mean, it, it just, there is no, like, sensical way of explaining it, other than, you know, how I've described it as. I, I think it's just they've, they've marked us down for, say, and if you look at it comparably, what if it was, what if it was the other, what if it was another street, like Lowry's, where the, the demographic of people are slightly wealthier and, and of usually Caucasian race? Why wouldn't, and some of the members are from that, or, or right off that street as well. Why wouldn't they do it to that street? Because you know that every owner in that street would actually have a problem with this. They would say, "I, why should some, why should my height restriction, my height of, of homes be restricted? Because some people feel, who don't even live on my street, want to do it." And, and if you look at the character, general character, it, it also doesn't make sense. Why would you give mixed use and then put three stories? And they have three forms of income, residential first floor, commercial second and third. And then the other half, the other part of that same street, you say, "You can lo, you got to lower your height, and then you can't buy out your neighbor's property and make a bigger driveway, or make a, make a big, nicer, slightly smaller family home." Our properties are long and narrow, so the only way for us to build and to have space for growing families is go up. If we're already there, it's not like we're just creating three stories. I, I promise you, if you look at the majority of the homes there, we are three stories.
If, I feel like, I'm not being disrespectful, but I feel like you're repeating yourself a little.
Sure, sure. Okay, I, I get it.
We got a lot to go through, and you, you made your point, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you very much, guys.
Yes.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. And yes, I live on the north side of, the north end of Garrett Avenue, and I have lived there for 40 years. I'd just like to give you a short snapshot of why Garrett Avenue is the way it is. It's an old community. My house is over 100 years old. I paid $35,000 for it in 1982. It was in terrible condition. So, you had these, this community that was originally built primarily initially for Italians from Italy who came to build the houses on the north side. And they made it, and they moved, and the Irish moved in. And they were the chauffeurs, the gardeners, the maids, and the cooks. And they made it, and they moved out. And in the mid-'50s, the African-Americans who had lived in Ardmore moved out. And now, we are this polygon. Well, as you know, zoning did not come in commercial until 1968. This is a community that dates from the turn of the century. It had tenements on Garrett Avenue. There was no doubt why this community was the way it was. And residential didn't come in until 1974. Well, in 1968, and actually still in 1982, there was a barber shop on the south side of Garrett Avenue, the downside of the bridge. And there was an ice cream store. There was the post office. There were a number of small businesses in houses. And if you look at the way they're built, you know that there was originally a front porch on many of these houses, and they closed them in and built their small mom and pop. So, they saw the barber pole, and they saw the ice cream shop, and they made the whole street commercial. And residential is not permitted in a commercial district. So, the north side didn't build differently, but it, it's R5. And we only have one house that's higher than about 30 feet, because, like my house. My house was built for $1,500 in 1920 for the Falcone family. And in those days, you build a house to your needs. There is not one light switch in the center of a room. They're all against the wall because they bought chiffre robes from Sears Roebuck. So, they had their bureau with the mirror, and they had the closet that was the full height. And the lady of the house had her, her dress for Sunday and her dress for doing her work, and maybe she had a dress for funeral. It's the way it was built. So, the north side, we have had student housing. Student housing ordinance came in in 2001. I worked on it because I saw what was going on. By that time, parking permits were imposed upon us. We didn't ask for it. But Villanova freshman students couldn't have a car, so guess where all their cars were? Their cars were all on Garrett Avenue, and they would go to the brick bar on Thursday night, and then they would stumble home. And Radnor House had a lot of cars, and they had freshmen and under, undergrad- And Radnor House had a lot of cars and they had freshmen and under, undergraduate students living there till the night they had a beer party with the kegs in the elevator going up and down the floors selling the beer and Radnor House threw them out. So parking is a problem. Actually, it's not room for four cars abreast on our street. We, we drive this way. But because the south side of Garrett, residential housing was not permitted, yes, the houses began to deteriorate and they were bought by absentee landlords and they put students in there. And until we got the ordinance in two thousand and one, they had four or five students in these houses and the living conditions were terrible. So that's why the lower side has deteriorated more than the upper side. Now, as to why they didn't do work on change the zoning on Lowry's Lane, it was specifically designed for, to develop transit oriented development on that section of Garrett Hill. And we fought very hard to have Emlyn Tenell included because at that time, there were rumors that the school district would sell the five acres. And we didn't want that. We wanted to keep the open space. We have no street trees on Garrett Avenue because there's not enough room. So I understand Suma's issue, but I think you have to put it into context. That doesn't mean you don't have change, but you have to understand the nature of the community. And the north side of Garrett Avenue where I live, it's multi-ethnic. It's no different than the rest of it. Yes, it's the more, one of the more affordable areas in Radnor Township to live. Little Chicago, Highland Avenue, Garrett Avenue. But the other piece I want you to know is because we all have porches, this is a community. It's not a bunch of houses on a street. It is a real community. And it's one of the reasons why I have lived in my house for forty years. Because I have, I'm alone, I have people who are my neighbors and if they don't see me for two days or they don't see that my car hasn't moved, they're knocking on the door to make sure I'm all right. So there's some value in that. We do need change, but I think you've gotten a picture that it isn't necessarily, it doesn't, it doesn't fit the context. I just wanted to do that, so you'll understand.
Can I ask you a question? I'm just trying to understand the issue since, since you're on, if I understand you right, you're on the north side of Garrett Avenue.
Right.
So if the south side was granted the, the zoning which allowed them to build up to what, thirty-five feet?
Thirty-five feet.
What does that mean? So someone's going to add on, that means what, they're going to have another car on this, parked on the street?
Well, there you put in another bedroom and then you have entitled to another car. Now, these lots are all narrow. Most of them are forty feet in the center, from the center of the street. My property goes from forty feet in the middle of the street to seventeen feet on the back line, but it's a hundred and eighty deep. Think about this. They had privy pits. We're talking about the early nineteen hundreds. I don't know when sewers came to Radnor and to Garrett Hill. It's just, it's the pattern of development. In effect, if you read the whole ordinance, the south side has many more rights than, say, I do. I have been reassessed. Yes, my assessment was doubled. I appealed it. I have one closet in the entire house. So I don't have three bedrooms. I do, but they're not three bedrooms. But the biggest piece is, my house could not be a tear down because in R five, it's a ten-foot side setback. I have three and a half on one side and five on the other. So as I pointed out to the department, to the assessment, you can't tear this down and build something bigger because the house, if it had, if it didn't stay non-conforming, it could be nine feet wide. That is not an advantage. My house will not go for a lot of money when I either move or die. So it's a trade-off. They got more reasonable side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, and Rick could explain that to you. My job in this whole thing was to do research, not to determine the zoning. I did the research. So there is, there is a difference here and I'm not saying you shouldn't have changed. Go up thirty-five feet, but you're not going to get much wider because these lots are narrow and what I would hope would not happen is that someone would buy three lots and build a monster. I think that would ruin the neighborhood. So thank you very much for letting me do that.
Thank you, Sarah. Did anyone else want to speak to the height issue?
I have some comments on the height, but they're very brief and I'd like to
Come on up.
I have some comments, but they're very
Can you say who you are? Introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Rick Barker and I have some comments about the height that are very brief and I'd just like to read my letter, they're included in my letter, when we talk about the outdoor dining.
Significant amount of your letter deals with the outdoor dining. Do you want to just deal, we, this?
I'll read my letter now if you'd like.
I meant, we were talking about, well, it's up to the chair.
I think it'd be confusing to get into the outdoor dining discussion, even through public comment at this stage.
I don't, I, I, I agree.
So can you just restrict your comments to the height issue?
If you'd like, I'll read that section of the letter.
Fine.
I'll just read the first bit of the letter. My name is Rick Barker and I served as Chair of the Garrett Hill Steering Committee tasked with overseeing the development and creation of the Garrett Hill Zoning District. I stand before you to share my perspective on the proposed zoning amendment with regard to Garrett Hill. The Garrett Hill Zoning District process was conducted over a period of two and a half years, two thousand and seven to two thousand and nine. It was initiated by Radnor Township. A professional planner, URS Corporation, and architect Campbell Thomas were retained to lead the process. The BOC appointed the Garrett Hill Steering Committee. The planner and the architect met with the community and the Garrett Hill Steering Committee at multiple public meetings and also held four charrettes as the project proceeded to receive the input of all of the stakeholders. A master plan was created for Garrett Hill and adopted by the Board of Commissioners in July two thousand and eight. The master plan formed the basis for the new Garrett Hill ordinances. The Garrett Hill Steering Committee held over a hundred public meetings as the master plan and the Garrett Hill ordinances were crafted. The Garrett Hill District, the Garrett Hill Zoning District process was unprecedented in its level of public involvement. Public participation was virtually unlimited. The Garrett Hill Zoning District ordinances were adopted by the BOC in October two thousand and nine. I will briefly address the proposed increase in height for the Garrett Hill neighborhood and the Garrett Hill Garrett Avenue districts. There is, there always exists a natural tension between preservation and redevelopment. As the five-foot increase in height will not affect the redevelopment potential in any way, the same arguments could be made both in support and opposition to the change in height. The increase will, however, negatively impact the preservation of the scale of Garrett Avenue as envisioned by the Garrett Hill community and Radnor Township and described in the Garrett Hill Master Plan. This issue is relatively straightforward and easy to assess. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I really don't want this to get into a, I, you know, I would prefer if you, if you have something to say, if you say it after we've vetted this whole height issue, because otherwise we just get into, you know, a long, a long prolonged debate from the public and I, I just don't, I, I'm not sure that serves any purpose. We'll hear, we'll hear you out after we're finished here.
Can I, can I ask a question? Maybe Commissioner Farley, since you have a lot of history of this matter, what was the original logic to limit the height on the south side to just thirty feet? Was it just all about aesthetics and preservation of?
So, yeah, I was not part of that conversation. I became a commissioner after, but it's my understanding, aesthetics is one, but they want, from what I've, the information that I've gathered from the people that were on this committee is that, that they wanted to keep it affordable, quote unquote. And to me, that's nebulous because what's affordable to me is not necessarily affordable to you and what's affordable to Bill Gates is not affordable to anybody else.
But how, but forgive me, I don't understand. How is a thirty-foot limitation means from an affordable standpoint versus a thirty-five foot?
It's preventing the, the tear down and making a house too big. That's my understanding that it's, let me finish, Rick, please. But, but, Rick, I'm, I'm speaking, please. It affects how, how tall, so you could basically add an extra floor to, they're saying that you could add an extra floor, then you would be, you could have one more car. My thinking is if you get rid of some of these college houses, which are actually smaller and they cram them in, you would have, you know, you'd have better parking because there are, it's more family, family oriented. Not to say that you're not going to have kids that are going to drive this well, but you would not have the, the college housing situation. If that answers your question. And to Suma's point and to Ms. Pilling's point, you can't go out, you can only go up. There, it's just too narrow.
So it's, it sounds like to me that there's, there's a lot of individual issues on the street and I guess I just kind of want to take a step back and, and ask some basic questions about the streetscape so that we can compare both sides and then possibly come to a decision not based on anybody's personal preferences or an extensive look at every piece of history on the street because we all know the neighborhood is changing significantly and has over the past one hundred years. And so based on that, are the setbacks on both sides of the street for the houses the same?
Are you talking the north, south?
Yes. The setbacks for the houses are not the same?
Not on the north and the south.
What's the difference between the two?
The setbacks on the north side of Garrett Avenue are R five setbacks. The setbacks on the south side of Garrett Avenue are relaxed Garrett Avenue. Neighborhood and Garrett Avenue, Garrett Avenue district setbacks. They allow the houses to be built much closer to the street. The side setbacks are also very relaxed. They allow a much bigger envelope in the Garrett Avenue neighborhood and the Garrett Avenue G A section.
So what are the setbacks?
Also, the impervious is sixty percent, whereas in R five, the impervious is forty percent. So in fact, the zoning is more liberal in the Garrett Avenue zoning district than anywhere else in the township, except for this one issue of the height.
Let me, let me just add to that. The impervious doesn't matter because you can't go sideways, you have to go up.
You can go back though, and you can go sideways. In other words, in Sarah's
You can't go sideways.
In Sarah's case, she's
Have, have any new buildings been built on that section of Garrett Avenue since the overlay went into effect?
Now, I, I'd like
Mr. Chairman, if it would help
Hey, hey, folks, folks, can I just say something? This is becoming a free-for-all and I don't want that. I'm not, I'm not going to tolerate this.
I respect you.
No, I want everyone to hear this. We're trying to get, we're trying to get some answers here and Kevin, if you can give us the answers on the setbacks, I'd prefer that.
I can sit here tonight and go line by line and compare R five front yard to Garrett Avenue front yard to Garrett Hill neighborhood front yard. Or I could prepare kind of summary chart for this commission to review and they could look at it. Just, again, it, it, there's so many details in here, I, I don't want to gloss over any one. I'll look at R five front yards since that was discussed first. R five is twenty-five feet in depth. The Garrett Hill Garrett Avenue setback front yard is a minimum of twenty-six, a maximum of thirty-six. So it's, they're right within that ballpark. There's, I, again, there's front yard setbacks or side yard setbacks, pervious coverage, heights, you know, we talked about thirty-five foot height in the R five is measured to the midpoint of the roof. You could add another seven or eight feet before you get to the ridge. On the other side, the south side, it's to the ridge, so it's thirty foot to the ridge. So where you would probably have on the R five thirty foot is to the gutter line, this is thirty feet to the ridge. So there is a significant difference, even if you're talking about the same height at thirty-five feet, they're measured differently. Garrett Hill or the Garrett Hill overlay measures to the ridge. Every other district in the township measures to the midpoint of a sloped roof. So there are a lot of differences and a lot of nuances. Again, I could probably spend the next hour discussing individually, were laid out in a chart for the commission to review side by side.
Here's how I'm feeling about this right now because Megan is asking for, Megan is asking for specific answers on some concrete things that we don't have before us. I mean, we could go look it up, but we don't, what, what we were given does not contain this information and I respect that, Kevin, that you can get it, but it's like a lot. So I'm, I'm, I'm just not knowing what, I, I'm feeling a little, I'd like my fellow commissioners to weigh in on this too. I'm feeling like we don't have a lot of factual information, like we're not getting a presentation here. We're sort of, we got an ordinance rewrite and we're sort of winging it and we're hearing, and we're, well, go ahead, sorry.
So in addition to the setback issue, what I was kind of focusing on was the height of the existing houses. This gentleman's house, did you say you're at one eighteen?
One seventeen.
One seventeen. Okay. Because I'm looking at a Google street view and it looks like some houses are two-story, then some houses are three-story. Are the three-story houses already over the thirty-foot limit? It looks like there's some new houses built right, I guess it's right across the street from you.
Actually, next door to us.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. They're, they're next door to us.
So it looks like there's several new houses that were built. Those are all two-story though.
Yeah, but those two-storied were built before the overlay district came into play. If the overlay district wasn't, they wouldn't be able to be built the way they did, because we're, we're like the only one that actually has like minimum and maximum blocklets, nobody else. So that's what restricts even building, you know, out or even trying to buy your neighbor and build and make a one home.
So when was the, when was the overlay put in place?
Two thousand and ten.
Because one of these houses, the blue one, looks like it's under, in this picture is under construction.
No, that, that's already, that was done back, over a year ago, pre-COVID.
So that was built
That house is thirty-five feet.
He, he, I guess what happened there was it was an accident on the, for the township. They didn't know how to read the, read the code because it was so complicated that they just approved it and then after the fact, they tried to, like, they could have
I can speak a little bit more specifically on that because that happened under my watch and it, it's been discussed quite often in, in some of the board meetings. The planner reviewer that the township engaged to help township staff with reviewing the building permits did not catch that there was an issue and an error on the plans. So the plans for the house were built taller than what the district would have allowed. That was an error on the planner reviewer's standpoint that company is no longer with the township. So, you know, that, that was an error in, in that. So those homes are, I think, about six or seven feet taller than what would normally be allowed within that district.
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to say again, I, I'm starting to feel like we don't have enough You know, I'm going to, I'm going to say again, I, I'm starting to feel like we don't have enough information as a planning commission right now on this issue. It feels like we're just hearing from people scattered through the audience. They're not coming to the podium. They're arguing among themselves. They're, they're, they're describing township behavior without the township having any, anything to say. It's like, I, I really, I don't know how the rest of the planning commissioners feel, but I feel like we need, we need a better, we need a better run-up.
Mr. Chairman, the, we didn't have a presentation because we're dealing with a singular issue of building height. So we didn't need, think we needed to get into, and weren't expecting to get into, comparing setbacks for side yard, front yard, impervious coverages that aren't part of this ordinance amendment. This ordinance amendment was dealing singularly with a five-foot increase in building height on the south side of Garrett Avenue versus what it currently is.
I know, but, but what, but my feeling is that when a planning commissioner asks for information, and I don't want to get it from all over the audience where I don't even, you know, I don't really know where this information is coming from. I want to get it from the township.
Sure.
And I, and I really think, I really think this is, this discussion has been beyond building heights.
Exactly, which is why I was trying to circle it back to, I can provide that information, but at the end of the day, comparing, providing a comparison of R five front yard setbacks to the Garrett Avenue neighborhood setbacks is irrelevant to the issue that we're talking about in terms of building height. And it's five foot from what it currently is to what we are looking at, which brings it a little bit more in line with the building heights that are either already in that district or which is allowed on the other side of the tracks.
Well, let, let me finish my point with asking specifically for those setbacks. So when thinking about this, the streetscape in section, you want the street to feel similar on both sides. You just do. And a five-foot difference in a height change when the setbacks are essentially the same would not change the character of the street.
I, I agree with you. The setbacks are not actually the, the same. The setback in the Garrett Hill zoning district is measured from the center of the cartway. So that makes it a little more confusing. But you're allowed to build closer to the street. What we did is we matched the zoning to the existing development. The real question is, do you want to extend the zoning in the Garrett Hill neighborhood section to the north side? Because they are disenfranchised. They don't have as liberal zoning. They don't have as big a zoning envelope. They don't have as liberal setbacks on the side yards. Again, they don't have as much impervious, so.
On, on the height, though?
Everything except the height.
And that's all we're here to look at?
Everything except the height. And all that's before you now is, in fact, as Kevin has stated, the height.
Right, so all that's before us right now is the height. And looking at the height and comparing the height, please let me finish.
I go.
It is in my opinion that I think the two issues should be separated from the outdoor dining and the height. And there does not seem to be a reason why one side of the street would have one height and the other side would have a different height, given similar setbacks and similar building styles on the street. So that's my opinion, and some of us may need more information.
I think, I think assessing the height is relatively straightforward, okay? I don't think it needs to be complicated. The setbacks are more liberal in the Garrett Hill zoning district than they are north of the bridge, okay? The north side of Garrett Avenue.
But Rick, 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 we're not, we're not here about the setbacks.
I, I understand. There, there is a difference in, 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 in the height that's allowed. That is entirely correct.
So I agree with Megan, I think.
I'll take my seat right now.
Thank you. If we, I agree with Megan, if we want to, if this commission feels comfortable proceeding on, on making this height, creating an equal height in Garrett Hill. I, I am willing, I'm for that. Does somebody, how do, how, how do people feel about that? Do we want to?
Do we need to make a formal motion to separate these two because they're one ordinance?
Yes, we do.
Well, I, I move to separate the two into two separate ordinances so we can act on them independently.
Excuse me?
I think it's more in the nature of a recommendation. We, we're already stuck with the ordinance the way it is. We're basically saying we don't want to approve it as is because we want it to be separated.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I, I would suggest there are advantages to having two simple concepts contained in the same ordinance. And it does streamline the review process and also saves a lot of money on advertising. Legal ads are very expensive. So when you get finished the discussion, if a majority would be in favor of, of, of one section of the ordinance, but not the other, that's a good reason to separate them. But I, I would hear everybody's input on both sections before you decide to separate them.
Okay. Then I believe we are, I believe we are finished with the height portion of this ordinance review. So the next section is the outdoor dining aspect.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to get a formal recommendation on that aspect? We, we have three sections that are in essence being revised per this ordinance. Section one and two are dealing with the height issue. So if this commission wants to make a recommendation on those two and then deal with the third recommendation on the outdoor dining, then that would give staff the opportunity to make any changes if necessary.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? I'm just trying to sort this in my head. So I realize that this is about height, but I think what I'm hearing is that for those who have the height, they're like, well, that's great, we, we have the height, but we can't do sixty percent, we can't go wider. It seems like that the grass is greener. And I just wonder, it's like, it's almost like it's an argument, well, you're, you can't have the height because you've got sixty percent. You can always go out, we can't go out. And it's like, everybody thinks the grass is greener on the other side. And I don't know if that's, they're just two different situations. And not, nobody's wrong. It's just that, you know, there's plenty of, every township, every district we have in here, a butts another district with a different rule or a butts another county or another with a different rule or another zoning district. I mean, many of us live across the street from somebody who has a different rule on the other side. I can't, I don't think we can always be, make it equal because they're all, many of us don't even conform to any of the zoning that's put in. But it just seems, I don't think you can, we can make a rule that's going to fit for everybody. I, I agree with what Megan's saying. I don't see a reason why five foot should make a difference as long as the community looks the same. And that was your very good point, is that if it doesn't change the aesthetics of the community, that should be, it shouldn't be an issue, but.
But I, aren't we just dealing with nineteen properties that some are over thirty feet anyway?
Yeah, it sounds like it. I mean, but you're right, we don't, there's a lot of information. I mean, I just have a piece of paper, so I don't have all the information. But I just feel like not everybody can have what the other person has just simply because of your very good point of the history of the neighborhood. Like, it's just, they were built at different times and they had different reasons and purposes. And it just can't all be made the same because it wasn't intended to be the same.
So what do we want to do, folks?
I think we should move forward and hear the dining portion and then decide where to go?
Okay. So who's, is there some way to represent, Kevin, is there some way to describe how this dining ordinance rewrite or intervention into, into the, so Garrett Hill didn't have outdoor dining. It was prohibited. What was the, how did this germinate?
Well, I, I think, and Commissioner Farhi may have more on this in terms of requests that he's received from the restaurants down there. When we entered into the COVID, the commissioners had Resolution twenty twenty sixty-one, which basically suspended any kind of enforcement on outdoor dining and outdoor retail sales to help the business community. And it was very well-received by the community throughout the township where businesses that did not have outdoor dining already didn't have to go through an extended approval process and could temporarily have some areas or increase our areas. And I think there was one business, particularly in Garrett Hill, that took advantage of that, had outdoor dining for well over a year at this point and really seemed to enjoy it. And I think that there was some, some concerns of, well, you know, we've been working with this under these provisions. It hasn't created a huge issue for the community, for the neighborhood. So let's look at now having some sort of outdoor dining in Garrett Hill, but on a very limited basis and, and very scaled back. Otherwise, if it would go beyond what we had proposed in here, then there would be some significant setbacks and provisions that would come in that would further restrict outdoor dining. But just when a very small scale start to open it up into the three or four food establishments in Garrett Hill to basically allow those restaurants the opportunity that every other restaurant in the township has.
So I'll, I'll touch on that. And the Garrett Hill overlay came into play, I guess, around two thousand and ten. So it was a different way and then it changed for two thousand and ten. So some businesses were grandfathered in. But Garrett Hill is not, I, I don't feel, again, I don't feel that it's really, you know, reaped the, the successes that other parts of the township have. Garrett Hill businesses and the restaurants, they've, they've lost a lot of business to Laura Marion and to Wayne. And, you know, you could say King of Prussia and wherever. So for Garrett Hill businesses to stay competitive, they need outdoor dining. The outdoor dining, I believe, would be better than what you see in Wayne because it would not be on a public sidewalk. All that would have to be done would have to be done on that property. So, you know, where Flippin' Bally's is and you see the side parking lot on Williams, it's not on the, it's not on the sidewalk. Antonella's tried to do it in some of their parking spots. Kevin is here and he'll make sure that you still have to have enough parking. You can't have, say, a hundred seats inside and then put forty more seats outside. So if you have, so if you have the seats that are, so you have the, you can't add more seats. If you add seats out, out, outside, you would have to take away seats inside. But it's important, it's important to these Garrett Hill businesses. We've lost Garrett Hill Pizza. If we lose Flippin' Bally's, which is struggling, and the Owl House as well, Garrett Hill's going to be a ghost town and no one wants that. No one wants that.
So Sean, like, we, a few months ago, we heard from a pizza owner.
Yes.
Who wanted to put outdoor dining in front of his pizzeria. Which would have been on the sidewalk.
Yes.
And I think he wanted to take some parking as well.
Yes.
And some, that went south, right?
Yes, that's going to go south because we need to hear from you whether, and the board needs to approve it. I like Mr. De Felice, but I've, from what I've gathered from him, it's shoot, ready, aim. You can't come with the plan and say, well, whether or not, you know, you're going to change the ordinance or change zoning, I'm proposing to do it. It all has to be done in conjunction with one another. So there've been a lot of issues with that, the, the Garrett Hill Pizza. And I don't think that that's a fair assessment of, it's not the, the poster child of, 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 really have had a, put a business together.
Yeah, it just seemed like during that presentation, the planning commission was hearing things that indicated that the, sort of the tightness of that, of that area really put a crimp on any ideas for, any kind of concept for outdoor dining. That you're putting people up against traffic, basically. And so, you know, that's part of the reality, right, of Garrett Hill. It's like, it's not Wayne in terms of there's more space in Wayne. But like if Garrett Hill wanted to do an outdoor dining on top of a building, like the Great American Pub, which is apparently fantastic, is that, would that be an option with the outdoor dining in Garrett Hill?
I, I, I mean, these, these businesses are barely staying, staying afloat. I know that Garrett Hill, when it, when Flippin', when the Wild Onion switched to Flippin' Bally's, they put a lot of money into it. I don't think that they can start ripping off roofs at this point. It's very simple as far as I'm concerned. And going back to the height ordinance, it's five feet. I think that you can listen to everybody and, as you said, it comes down to one thing. It's five feet, it's an equi, it's an equability issue on that end. And when it comes to the dining, it's outdoor dining. There, it's been going on for a year. I don't think the police have been called once, once. And these businesses need to stay competitive with Wayne. And again, I think it helps the neighborhood charm of having these outdoor cafes, outdoor dining. It makes it less of a college. We all heard what happened with the Flippin' Bally's where, where there was a big raid with a hundred and thirty arrests for college underage drinking. It's going to become more of a family place. There's going to be outdoor dining. You'll take your kids there on a beautiful night. You'll sit out, yeah, you'll have a beer, you'll have some nachos, and that's it. It's a family place. Take the, across the street, the Garrett Hill Owl House. There's not a lot of places where you could put outdoor dining. But there is that little kind of patio on the way down. You could put two tables out there. Again, on a beautiful night, you could have a little bit of outdoor dining. And it's kind of in a little gardeness type of area. That's all we want. It's nothing, nothing that's going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's actually going to make it more homey and more, more family, more family-oriented and more family-friendly. That's it. I, I just, I just, I just hesitate to think that we're reading too into this. There's just basic rights of equability and keeping some businesses afloat that have proven in times of COVID that they're being responsible. And, you know, that they're being responsible with the neighbors and there's no complaints.
So in terms of like the, the, the quantity of outdoor dining, what are you talking about in terms of seating?
So that's, so that would probably be up to Kevin again.
I mean, how do you determine how many seats someone can have outdoors?
It's, it's regulated, it falls back to the outdoor dining. And I'm, I'm pulling up that regulations. I think up to twelve seats they would get without having to provide any additional parking. Beyond that, which is in essence, three tables with four chairs each. Beyond that, they would have to, there would be a mandated increase in parking. And I believe the two establishments, Flippin' Bally's and the Owl House are, from what I understand, are non-conforming in, in talking with the business owners about possible expansions and things that they could do to, to help their businesses. So if they're non-conforming with regards to parking, they couldn't go beyond twelve seats because twelve seats, outdoor seats would require additional parking. And if they don't have parking to support the indoor seats, they wouldn't be able to then provide additional parking for the outdoor seats. So we're really looking at that in terms of it being limited to twelve new seats on the outside. Obviously, somebody could get creative and do some sort of structured parking or go get zoning here and board relief to do off-site parking or enter into some sort of agreement like that through some sort of zoning relief. But as we're looking at it, thinking parking is going to be the limiting factor because it's what it is on most of our businesses, particularly down in Garrett Hill, that it would be twelve.
And sidewalks would be, it wouldn't be, it would be prohibited on sidewalks?
Well, there's, there's not an outright prohibition in the code. We're just allowing it in here if they meet the spatial requirements in having a clear forty-eight foot, forty-eight inch width outside of the dining area. But the sidewalks are pretty tight down there, so I think that that could be very difficult to do anything of scale. You may be able to get a table and two chairs out there, but it would be something extremely small scale, if, if anything at all.
And so what, what would be the guidelines for, what is a restaurant? In other words, would Biwood, Biwood Seafood, which makes food and people take food out of there, would they, would they qualify as, or could they put seating in front of their establishment for outdoor dining? If somebody wanted to stop by, get the fried clam cake and then eat it there?
They could not. Outdoor dining is only applicable to restaurants. And the way we look at that from a zoning standpoint, a restaurant from a retail establishment, a restaurant has indoor seats. And outdoor dining is only applicable to restaurants that has indoor seats and it's capped at a percentage of that. So that's, that's where the difference, if it's a pizza shop or something that just sells carryout, that wouldn't be applicable for outdoor dining.
So we're talking about. So we're talking about less than, probably less than a dozen establishments, if that, right?
I think three or four maybe at this point, depending on what happens at 910 Conestoga.
And would there be safety aspects involved in this in terms of if tables?
All of the outdoor dining regulations, it's in chapter, it's in 280, section 115 of our code, are still applicable. So when this listers office and I were going back and forth with this, we were trying to figure out how we could do something that opens it up a little bit in Garrett Hill, but not make it completely onerous. My concern was, well, what about all of the safety issues? What about amplified music? What about regulating portable heaters, tent coverings and things like that? Umbrellas and advertising on that. And none of that really kind of was addressed in the first draft. I said, well, that's very important. If it's important to have in any other area of the township, it's important to have in Garrett Hill. The reasons that those safety regulations are in there is because we want to keep patrons safe. We want to keep the pedestrians safe, you know, separation from traffic. So we rolled it all back into the outdoor dining and just kept it as really the 12. The parking is going to be the limiting factor on that.
Well, I think, I think outdoor dining by its, by its very nature is something that's happening everywhere and people are appreciating it. And I mean, there are, there are great advantages to having outdoor dining. A lot of times you'd rather dine outside if, if the weather's nice. So I mean, in term, my feeling is that in terms of the idea, the concept of it, I don't have any problems with it. I, I am a little worried about the tight nature of Garrett Hill and having people outside, you know, in an environment that where there are cars near. I, I'm, you know, it's, it's just a concern.
Sorry, can I address that? There's, it's actually safe, Garrett Hill is safer than Wayne. I mean, if you're a car, you can pull right up on the curb and go through a window real quick or, you know, there's just that sidewalk buffer and there are people eating on that sidewalk. Maybe there's three feet. If you look at where Flippin' Bally's is, that's where they're going to keep their outdoor dining. I mean, that's far from the curb, real far from the curb. So, and that's mainly where the outdoor dining is going to be, probably just in that restaurant. Like I said, there could be some at, at the Owl House. You know, a car going through is always a risk, but there's much more of a buffer when you look at Flippin' Bally's versus anywhere on the, you know, in that dining district than Wayne.
So how would the, would this be, like, would people apply for outdoor dining? Is that how, how would it work?
Same regulations would apply. They would submit an application to our design review board for approval of the location, the number, and importantly, the type of furnishings that are going to go out there. All of those regulations still apply. It would be reviewed in a public meeting, any approvals or conditions of approval. And then they apply for a license through our health division for an actual outdoor food license. Times of year all apply, the hours of operations still all apply. So all the safety aspects that we have in our regular outdoor dining are still there for here. We just know that parking is going to be the limiting factor because of how small the lots are down in Garrett Hill on the, on the Conestoga roadside with those food establishments. So that's, in essence, it's, it's allowing it with the same regulations and restrictions that every other restaurant have. But because of the tightness, they don't have the opportunity to really expand like some of, you know, and I can think of Astea, you know, they have a massive parking lot that they were able to put 50 seats in. You don't have that ability to expand those businesses, Flippin' Bally's or the Owl House, because there's commercial entities that are basically attached to them on the other side. So there's, there's not a whole lot of, of room for parking there to meet the indoor seating requirement. And if that's non-conforming, by code, they are not allowed to expand a non-conformity.
So fire, all fire and building codes would kick in right at the beginning and?
All of those regulations are reviewed by our health officer and our building code officials after it receives the aesthetic approval from our design review board to make sure that egress, ingress and egress for pedestrian safety, accessibility is something that we look at and is something that the state inspects. We get audited by the state every three or four years. So those are all things that are looked at and would be looked at as part of this as well.
I had one clarification question, Kevin. I think you said earlier that if you take 12 seats out of your restaurant, you can't replace them? Someone said that.
I did.
You can't, you can't add seating, right?
I'm sorry, I don't know that I understand that.
Because we have, we have comment from the public that suggests that you can add seating in addition to all your seating that you maintain inside the restaurant, inside.
The number of outdoor seats is based off of a percentage of the indoor seats as well as capped. So if you get 12 outdoor seats, which is 50% of the amount of indoor, so if you have 24 indoor seats and you're allowed at a 50% ratio, you could get 12 outside, 12 outside, you don't have to provide parking.
So you have 36 seats.
You could, in, in theory, you have 36 seats. And I don't know if it's 50% or 25%, I forget what the actual ratio is. It may be 25%.
Kevin, if they remove seats inside, would that allow them to have more seats outside?
It would not, because again, it's, and it is 25%. So the number of outdoor seats is limited to 25% of the indoor seats. So if you're going to reduce the indoor seats, then you're reducing the percentage that you would have to have outside.
Apologize.
But am I correct in understanding with, with the, the parking issues? Even if you had 100 indoor seats, you would be capped at 12 unless you had the parking?
So, correct. And the parking then would be, so at 100 indoor seats, you could in theory have 25 outdoor seats. The first 12 seats are no parking. Seats 13 through 24, you would have to have one space for every four seats after the first 12 and then an additional space for that 25th seat. So your 12, your four, your four or five parking spaces for those additional 13 seats.
Kevin, I have a follow-up question on all that. I know that when we did PI zoning ordinance, we worked on developing yields. Is there a way to determine how many people could have seats outside their restaurants in Garrett Hill today?
I could pull the food licenses to determine the number of indoor seats. It could get extremely complicated in trying to do an analysis is to see what the parking conformities or non-conformities are to determine where they would be at. But, you know, if you just keep it as a number of seats as a percentage and assume that nobody wants to do more than 12, 12 is, you know, would be 48 indoor seats. I don't know which restaurants down there have 48 seats or more that would be capped at the 12. But again, I think the number of restaurants, I'm thinking of the two obviously big ones, the Flippin' Bally's and the Owl House. One across the street, so there's only three or four down there that I can think of that actually have indoor seats outside of 910, which is vacant right now and gutted. So there's no seats in that one actually. Who knows what a redevelopment plan, one that's going to look like?
Thank you again. As I said before, the height is a relatively straightforward, easy to assess issue. Not so with the proposed change to Radnor Township's outdoor dining ordinance. I don't believe anyone is opposed to alfresco dining per se. On the surface, why not zone for outdoor dining in Garrett Hill? Of course, the planner, architect, Garrett Hill Steering Committee and community participant asked this question during the Garrett Hill zoning process. Just utilize the existing outdoor dining ordinance. The reasons this approach was not affected are well illuminated by analysis of the particular outdoor dining proposed changes. The damaging impacts of these changes are twofold. First, by its very definition, it will serve to diminish the already overburdened, chronically inadequate parking supply in the Garrett Hill zoning district and surrounding neighborhoods. Second, it eliminates virtually all the outdoor dining setbacks that the other Radnor Township residents can rely upon to ensure the unencumbered, quiet, peaceful enjoyment of their property. When the Garrett Hill zoning district process commenced and throughout, the clarion call to the planner, architect and the Garrett Hill Steering Committee was, don't do anything to make parking worse. This view is universally shared by all stakeholders, property owners, businesses, neighbors within the district, neighbors surrounding the district, everybody. Matt Baumann, head of the community development at the time, advised, at the end of the day, it's all about parking.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you can.
Are you done reading?
I'm not done yet. Would you like me to continue and then ask? Current parking requirement, requirement for restaurants, one space per three seats, one space per two employees on the shift of greatest employment. Adoption of the proposed changes would not provide, provide for parking for the first 12 outdoor seats, a diminishment of four spaces. For the next 12, one space per four seats, a diminishment of another space. This would be the case for each establishment. While this is suitable for Wayne with its considerable availability of municipal parking, not so for Garrett Hill. This is further exacerbated in that the outdoor dining seating will occupy existing parking spots and as such, will further diminish the parking supply. What the planner, architect and the Garrett Hill Steering Committee also carefully considered was the potential detrimental impact as redevelopment occurs and buildings are reconfigured. In Garrett Hill, every single space is important to preserve to help ensure neighbors can find a spot near their residences instead of blocks away as well as for businesses to thrive because patrons are able to find a spot instead of circling through the neighborhood or worse, taking their business elsewhere. The inevitable degradation of the parking supply will not only negatively impact the surrounding residence, but is likely to harm the other businesses as well, the other businesses as well. The second damaging impact, the proposed elimination of the outdoor dining setbacks, is flagrantly egregious. With regard to the proposed section 115.4 subsection A10F, the proposed chain reads as, "The setbacks and requirements of subsections A10B, C and D shall not apply to the properties in the Garrett Hill Conestoga Road District. However, a 50-foot setback shall be required between the outdoor dining area and any adjacent detached, single-family dwelling." Gone would be the 100-foot setback for residential properties. A10B. Gone would be the 100-foot setback for residential unimproved lots. A10C. Gone would be the protection for immediately adjacent properties to the rear or side, prohibited unless a 500-foot setback is maintained. Section A10D, gone. Why is the setback reduced to 50 feet for Garrett Hillians and only for detached, single-family dwellings? Only one of which is in proximity. With the exception of this single instance, instance, no setback is required, zero. This would be the effect of not specifying setbacks for the actual types of dwellings that exist in Garrett Hill. And why in Garrett Hill is the setback to be measured from the dwelling instead of the property line as elsewhere throughout the township? Why should Garrett Hillians impacted by outdoor dining be denied the same rights and protections afforded to all others living in the township? Why should those Garrett Hillians living in attached and semi-detached dwellings be denied the same rights and protection as all others living in the township? What will be the magnitude of the diminished real estate values on those adjacent and surrounding property owners without the protections of setbacks afforded to all others living in the township? In this light, proposed A10F is patently unfair. Certainly on the face of it, these proposed outdoor dining ordinance amendments may seem benign. However, once understood, they are far from it. They clearly seem tailored to benefit a single property owner to the detriment and at the expense of many businesses and residents alike. For these reasons and some others, I respectfully suggest that the outdoor dining ordinance amendment not be sanctioned for the Garrett Hill zoning district, just as the planner, architect and the Garrett Hill Steering Committee determined after a sustained and considerable attempt to figure out how to zone for outdoor dining in Garrett Hill. The planner ultimately advised that zoning could never accommodate every contingency. That is why our code provides for waivers issued by the zoning board and also for conditional use to be granted by our BOC. In the case of permitting limited outdoor dining in Garrett Hill, these avenues are far more practical and far less likely to produce unintended consequences, far less likely to create ongoing unresolvable conflicts than amending zoning. While I believe almost all folks are well-intentioned, good intentions do not guarantee good outcomes. Garrett Hill is unique and that is the only place in Radnor Township where the residential neighborhood and commercial business districts are interwoven. Careful consideration and great caution need to be taken with zoning to ensure against detrimental repercussions as well as to embody and exemplify basic fairness. Please do not sanction sections 1, 4 and 5 of the proposed amendments to the outdoor dining regulations. Based on what I've learned throughout the Garrett Hill zoning district process, this is bad zoning and is bad for Garrett Hill. I fear once Pandora's box is opened, it will be impossible to close. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Matt, I'm, I'm sorry. I know that this is your board and I apologize, but I need to, I feel the real need to jump in. I'll be brief, I'll be two minutes.
Come on, go ahead, Sean.
First of all, it's a residential area. So last night, there was a board of commissioners meeting. It was also my, my birthday, my wife's birthday. We walked from Rockingham to Flippin' Bally's to have a beer. Most of the people that go there walk. Number two, Steve Bages has been very kind in granting his parking area late at night. So people park in that, in the Rosemont Office Complex. So parking is not going to really be that much of an issue after 5:30, 6 o'clock. Number three, they just don't want any outdoor dining. When we had the Garrett Hill Comfort Station, the bathroom at Emmental Park, I heard a snack bar was outdoor dining. I don't know what it is, I don't know the disconnect, but, you know, you know, Coca-Colas and Slim Jims are not outdoor dining. But I was told not to proceed with that by this group of people because it was considered outdoor dining, a comfort station for softball, which would only be open, you know, 10 hours a week maybe. And finally, the neighbors are for it. You have two, two people, really one family that is opposed to it here. But everyone that I've spoken to, all the families in Garrett Hill, all the families in Conestoga Village, all the families in Old Oaks and those in Beaupray that can walk to it, want this and the business is needed. This is overwhelmingly wanted by the community. So just those four points for the board and for you, and I apologize.
No need, no need. But I, can you tell me a little more, Sean, about the Bages thing? That's, because I've often wondered why that huge parking lot couldn't be used to, you know, help the parking overload in Garrett Hill.
Sure.
How did that, what's the deal there?
Well, I mean, it's, it's mainly, you know, it's for medicine and, you know, doctor's office. But after 4:30, 5 o'clock, it clears out, as you know. And he's always been generous, you know? I mean, the, the people that park there don't trash it, they don't litter. He's been generous with the Fourth of July parade. So they park there. There's no, you don't see any tow signs, park here and get towed. You don't see that in Garrett Hill, right? So people park there and, and it doesn't clog up the, the neighborhood streets. And it's mainly the neighbors that go there. These are neighborhood hangouts. I mean, I like- I mean, like I said, I walk there. I walk there all the time with my wife. It's great. This is what it, this is what the neighbor, I mean, it needs a kick in the arm after COVID. And it's proven itself, it's proven itself that we can handle it, and there has not been one police report for noise or for parking or for anything. This is what the neighborhood needs. This is what the business owners want, and this is really what the community wants.
I have to support that. I walk there too, with my family, and in the 18 years I've lived here, I've never had to leave because there wasn't a parking spot, but I drive through wait all the time and leave because I can't find a parking spot, even in the overflow parking. I've had nev, I've always pulled up right in front. I think I've only had to use Bages maybe a couple times, maybe when, just on a busy Saturday night or something, but I've always been able to park right in the restaurant's parking lot or right in front. And I always see my neighbors there, and they've, many of them have walked as well. And the only time I even drive there is if I'm passing through or, you know, picking up takeout or something like that, which obviously we did more over COVID. So I see my neighbors there, and I feel like these are businesses we need to support. These are people that we need. And we had a, remember when Zoe opened up over in the other side of Wayne? And we said that, you know, that parking that Zoe had was so important to Capelli Taylor's, and Capelli couldn't, you know, have people pulling up in front all the time because it was really difficult to back out. So there was a relationship established so that that restaurant would continue to provide parking to Capelli Taylor's, and how important that relationship was. And that's what this is. We need to support these people who are our neighbors, and we, if you walk in there, it is your neighbors in there. And I feel like you've made a really good point. There's been no calls. There's, we should support our neighbors, and we should find ways to make sure it's safe. We should find ways to make sure that, you know, but these are, the people that are going there are mostly walking there. That time of night, they're walking.
Is there any other staff comment or commissioner comment?
I just have one more thing to add. I agree with what Liz said. I also think that just by giving our recommendation doesn't mean that the outdoor dining is going to happen. All of this still needs to go through the approvals. And so based on our level of input here, to me, it's pretty obvious that a recommendation should follow because there's no exception to all of the other rules that they're subject to. So I agree that we should move forward and recommend it.
So Mary, what's our, what's the best way forward here, given that we've heard the height, we've heard the outdoor dining?
I don't have a sense, although I have a sense that a majority of the planning commission seems to support the outdoor dining. Is that also true of the height, just like a straw poll?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm seeing enough nods, so then it would be appropriate to make a motion on the entire ordinance.
Would someone like to do that?
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the ordinance as written. Or recommend that we, or what are we doing? We're recommending approval of the ordinance.
I'll second.
The outdoor dining in the 35-foot maximum ceiling height.
Second?
Yeah, I second.
Call in favor? Thank you, folks, for your input tonight. Thanks, Kevin and Sean.
Thank you, commission members.
Ian, could you please pull up 401 East Lancaster Avenue on the big screens, please?
I have a question for you, Steve. Are we being broadcast again?
Yes, sir. It's back to normal.
Because our screens here don't have us. I want to turn on my screen. It's just.
That I don't have an answer for. So there is no one to represent the group, so I just want to, I'm not representing, I am not representing them, so to speak. I am presenting it to the planning commission, okay? So this is the item on your, in your packet, 401 East Lancaster Avenue. This is the Bateman Gallagher property, the Legion in Wayne. This is a very simple project. There's two lots. This is a lot consolidation, so what they're asking to do is erase this lot line and create one lot. The Gannett Fleming review letter, minor comments, zoning table must be revised to indicate the existing conditions and proposed conditions. The waiver request is one that's asked often and frequently, the 500-foot principal buildings, utilities, et cetera. Another waiver they're asking for is to mark large trees on the map, on the plan. They're not planning any improvements with this application. They're just consolidating the lot, so they're asking for that waiver. Those waivers go to the Board of Commissioners, but would gladly have recommendations from this commission. The traffic note, there is no traffic comments because this lot consolidation doesn't provide any new traffic. The last items on the Gannett Fleming letter are, "A copy of the consolidated deed must be provided for review, and a title report must be submitted prior to the final plan recording." So this is a basically very straightforward one. Again, in essence, we're erasing a lot line. We're taking away a line on a piece of paper.
So Steve, did they say what their intention was? Why are they doing this?
That I don't know, and it's not a requirement of them coming in. So if they do want to make any improvements, they're going to have to follow a process, and most likely they would be back in here, depending on the magnitude of the improvement.
Do you know, Steve, with, by combining the two lots, what size of a, what's maximum size property you could eventually develop there, should they decide to sell?
So again, I'm not representing them. I'm presenting them. Property area, 37.8 square feet, gross title line. Lot area provided, 23.8. I mean, I'm just reading off the table. We do have somebody from the Bateman Gallagher post here. Again, he's just here to see how this is going to go. I don't know, like I say, there's no requirement for any applicant to say what they have for future plans. They consolidate the lot. If something is done that meets land development requirements, they're back before you. If something is done that's just a grading permit, they don't come back for you. That gets done through staff. Building permit, same thing, unless there's some zoning requirements that need to be, they need relief on, they'd have to go to ZHP. Otherwise, they get a building permit from our codes department.
But the American Legion, the entire lot, including the building, it's owned by?
So who is the Legion owned by, sir? Come on up. You're asking questions I can't give you answers to now, but.
Good evening. My name's Jack Cast. I am the finance officer for Bateman Gallagher presently. Now, what was the question that was asked?
Having grown up in this town, and the Legion was, has always been there even when I was a little kid, so I'm always curious, like, who, your company owns that?
It's actually not a company. We are a charter through a national organization. This property was donated to us by the family of Bateman, William Bateman, who of course was a World War I veteran, killed in action. In 1933, the family donated the property to the American Legion. And we have been the caretakers of that property ever since.
Got it.
In 1945, when the war was ending, apparently the current, the officers at that time felt they needed some money. So they somehow sold the lot that has nothing but grass on it to themselves to generate funds to help the veterans coming home. And when they did that, it drew the line on the lot. So the current commander and the current board just wants to eradicate that line so that Bateman Gallagher again owns the entire property without question. And that's the reason why we've done this.
And there's no, there's no intention or no, or no plans whatsoever to sell it?
No, oh, no. No, no. We would not be permitted to sell it because it was donated to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So does someone make a, want to make a motion to approve this lot line change?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
I'll make that motion. That we approve the lot line change.
Before we do that, I don't think I really understand why we're doing this.
We do this all the time. I mean, this is, this is as pro-form as it gets, right, Steve?
That's correct, sir. The reason that this is before you is it cannot be done administratively because the lot as combined is large enough to be re-subdivided. So the code prohibits Steve and myself from approving this administratively. It has to come before you and the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. So again?
Oh, Steve, go ahead.
Oh, good, no, be my guest. So I move that we accept a lot consolidation and I guess support the waivers.
Second? So we're down to 250 King of Pressure Road. I have to say something here at this point, folks. The planning commission, there was a resubmission of the plans on July 7th. The planning commission never got the resubmission of the plans, the planning commission members. The planning commission, the traffic study from our consultant came out today at 11:00. So the plan, this planning team has not seen the resubmission. They've not seen the, our consultants' report. There's no way we can go forward tonight. There just isn't, in my purview, unless someone disagrees with that. I, and we're totally not equipped here.
If I may, I understand you might not be in a position to make a recommendation. I still think it would be beneficial to go through our presentation and kind of address the open questions that you had at last month's meeting.
Yeah, the problem is that we haven't had a chance to review. I have, because I found the thing at 11 o'clock today, but the rest of the planning board has not had a chance to review any of this resubmission or our consultants' report. So Steve, I don't, I don't know how we, how, what value it is to have a presentation where we're not even up to speed on.
So, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, I see your point. We try to accommodate the applicants. You know, usually it's a 30-day submission date or at least three weeks prior to the planning commission, to give our consultants' time to review the plan, generate the letters, put the letters out, have the letters as part of the packet. We received this less than a week ago. We don't have the full review letters. We do have our traffic review. So this will be a decision, you know, that the planning commission has to make. Do you want to hear the presentation? When you don't have all the information, or do you want to chew? By the next meeting, you'll have the Gannett letters. Again, we already have Damon's letter. You can review that and then come back with questions. That's up to you. We may require an extension from the applicant. I believe we will, if the commission tables this. So we'd have to, they'd have to agree to give us an extension. I think the fact that the commissioner, the chair had noted, you're not going to get a decision one way or the other tonight. We need the extension. But it's really up to you, folks, if you want to hear it. I know the hour is late. It's your call, or do we start anew, so to speak, in August?
I mean, my, so my point is, it's, you know, my point is that the planning commission got, is getting things six days ahead of the planning commission meeting, and I feel like it's, I don't, I think it's not, it, I personally feel like I'm not going to make the same judgment that I would make, that I would have made if I had been prepared. So I don't, I don't understand why we're, what are we going to hear that's relevant, given that we don't have the basis for making any, like, conclusions or even, like, judgments?
So if you recall last month's meeting, we gave a presentation on the plans to construct the parking structure at 250, and after some discussion, you asked that we come back this evening to address some of the questions and issues you raised, particularly the traffic impact assessment and the methodology used in that report. Over the last month, our consultant, Craig Richardson, has spoken with Mr. Drummond, and it's my understanding that he's okay with the methodology. So because it was such an issue last month, I really think it would be beneficial to hear our changes to the report and the methodology to clarify at least that issue this evening.
So how does the rest of the commission feel about this? I think I've made my case.
I have a separate comment on that. I saw your letter to Roger in which you said, "We'll comply, number one. No need to answer this question, number two. Number three, no need to answer this question." Some of our applicants, instead of presenting it that way, will take the engineer's letter and lay out the item and then have a reply side by side. We have this thing where we're going to be flipping back and forth, trying to get to the answer.
I believe, I'll let Alex Tweedy come up. I believe he was going to go through.
No, 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 not verbally. I mean, in advance of the meeting. So we could, sometimes we've done this, and then we'll say, "Oh, there's these six things that really are problems for us." We, it's a style request.
You're talking about reciting Roger's letter in our response letter? Right. But I think the, and I think some of the confusion with this resubmission and the timing might be part of the confusion. We were here last month presenting against the letters that were issued last month, and we were seeking a recommendation for approval at last month's meeting. There were two major conditions asked for us to address. Go to the shade tree commission, which we did, and we can discuss that tonight. Some people were at that meeting, and hopefully you've received some feedback from that meeting. And then twofold, more data on the traffic study. In an effort to shorten our timeline, we made the resubmission in advance of this meeting, but it wasn't intended to review new letters at this meeting. This meeting was a continuation of last month's meeting where we're already discussing last month's letters. So we weren't expecting comments on this. Last month, I came up and said, "We're going to comply with these this way." We gave that technical stuff to Roger early, just to save a week before this meeting, but this is the same presentation we gave last month, and you were going to act last month except for two questions, and that's why we were coming back today to discuss in more detail.
And I apologize for jumping in on that respect because I was unable to attend last month's meeting.
Understood.
But to be clear, I think my notes reflect that at the last month's meeting, and I'm sorry I'm in this sound chamber, I hope I'm not echoing as much for you as it is. I hope I'm not echoing as much for you as it is in here. But at the last month's meeting, you tabled it so that the, the engineers could resolve the traffic issues. And I got Damon's letter this morning, as I think most of you got it today. And it seems like the most important item in Damon's letter is the fact that there is a, a degrading of level of service at several of the intersections, but there isn't a proposal on how to remedy that. And so the things that you tabled the, the review for haven't been complete. And the engineers haven't come back to you with the solution that they're able to work out. In fact, Damon just formulated his comments this morning. What happens next is that the engineers talk, come up with a resolution to those problems and come back to you with that resolution. So although, yes, they were here last month, but, but what you sent them back to do has not been done.
But, but Mary, I just want to clarify that we, none of us have received Damon's information.
I, I apologize.
So we're, we're way behind.
Okay.
And that's my apologies. I thought you, I thought we did send that to you this afternoon.
I mean, I think that has to be like.
Damon is prepared to step through his letter.
This board is very not prepared.
If you wish, Damon is prepared to step through the letter. It's whatever pleases this board, however you want to move. So the current date we've been provided by 250 BDN is 7:30 of this year. Either way, we're going to need an extension, right? No matter what happens tonight, we're going to need an extension into September at some point, you know, to go before. If you're able to go before as preliminary final, there's still the two caucus meetings with the commissioners. So can we agree that we'll get that extension regardless of what occurs tonight? Thank you.
So do we, what do we want to do here? Do we want to take a, a vote on this? Do we continue? Do we let this presentation roll here, given that you have not read anything new?
I understand that it is late and, and you won't be making any recommendations this evening. But being that Damon is ready to go through his letter, I, I think it might be beneficial to, to do that just in case there's questions or issues that arise through his review of the letter that, that we can be ready to answer next month.
So I've, I've been only on the planning commission four years, but Skip's been a little longer. It's never, this has never happened this way. Never have, has this planning board not had the materials and not read the materials when they're going to hear about the materials. That to me is a nonstarter.
Actually, Mr. Gold, sometimes it does. So sometimes in the past, you're given something in your packet and it's revised before it gets to you and you see a revised plan and when we're back, like one set of review letters. But that, that's immaterial. It's really your call. You, a couple of options for you. Damon steps through his letter, these folks reply, or we go to the next meeting and, and that's totally your, your call. Yours and the commission's call.
Um, I, I think it, it would be helpful for us to go through everything at once. I really do. I think most of us read the material before we get here. And so by the time we hear it gone through again, it's the second or third time that we're hearing it, we're digesting it. My memory from our last meeting wasn't that it was just the traffic either. There were several waivers on the table. A lot of them were kind of assumed that they would be followed up on. And so from my standpoint, I would appreciate kind of seeing everything and then hearing it all at once so that, so that we can just have it all out. And I know it's unfortunate that you had to sit here through the whole meeting until this came out. But for me, it would be more comfortable.
Okay. Would it be beneficial for us to just give a high-level overview of what we were going to present and then you could make the decision if you do want us to present? If that will help in your review before we come back next month? Or do you just want us to?
I, I personally just think it's, let's just do it all in August because we're, we're meeting in August, first week of August. So let's just do it all at once and tackle it and, and provide the information. I mean, listen, traffic is the most critical thing, especially on King of Prussia Road. So for us to really have that letter, be able to review it prior to the meeting, I, I can't speak for everyone else on the board, but for me, that's critical.
In spite of wanting to review everything all at once, and I do, and that's not now. I had one question that I saw on page 200 of the 249 pages that we had. And it talks about a long-term permanent easement of parking on the adjacent or next-door lot of a different property owner that was, I guess, given for access. Is that going to be continued in your development or is that gone?
That's gone, I believe. Alex, you're, which, was that in the traffic study?
I think you're referring to the traffic report.
No, I'm not referring to the traffic report. I'm referring to documents. There was a, a easement or an assignment of parking. It even mentioned a number of parking spaces.
Service to, to share with next door, I believe.
Yes. And because that's what the property used to be doing when it was Penn Med, because they didn't, didn't have enough parking.
Sorry, that, I believe what you're referring to, there was a license arrangement with Penn Medicine with the adjacent property owner for roughly 40 spaces. They also licensed some spaces from other properties, one across the street. The license for the 40 spaces from the adjacent property did not run with the land that expired with Penn Medicine. That was a explicitly, just between Penn Medicine and that user. That's not intended to be re-upped. And other licensing of, of spaces across the street, that's not intended either. Really, the impetus of us putting the parking garage on site is really to resolve a parking issue that was kind of spread around to other sites, resolve it just on this property. So that's, that was sort of, that was our initial thought process when we were going through, you know, deciding whether we were going to pursue adding a parking garage or not.
I apologize to my fellow planners because I could see where we were headed. But I, it's been in the back of my head for a couple of weeks, how that was set up. So I understand it's not, doesn't exist.
So I think we should table this until August. Does anyone dissent? Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?